In the twilight glow I see her. Blue eyes crying in the rain. As we kissed goodbye and departed, I knew we'd never meet again. Love is like a dying ember, only memories now remain. Now my hair has turned to silver. All my life I've lived in vain. I can see her star in heaven, blue eyes crying in the rain. Someday when we meet up beyond the, we'll stroll hand in hand again.
Welcome to the Performing Arts Center. I'm Harvey Parrott and I'm the President of the Board of Directors for the Paradise Performing Arts Center. Wow, wait until you see me dance. That was awesome. In exchange for not charging them our normal rental fees, they agreed to allow me to give you guys the State of the Union about the Paradise Performing Arts Center. Is that a deal? Alright. Just for the sake of curiosity, how many of you here tonight have never been in the Paradise Performing Arts Center? Raise your hand. Marvelous. If you'd leave your credit cards at the desk, we'll be taking care of those for you. In order to explain to you where we are today, I thought what I'd do is give you a very short history of where we started, and I'd do best by starting when I first came on the board, so I can give you an idea of what was happening during the last eight years at the Paradise Performing Arts Center, because I know that some of you have kind of followed what's been going on. In the year 2008, the Paradise Performing Arts Center had a mortgage of $440,000. I'm rounding off. We had a credit card debt of $21,000. We had private notes to $26,000, and we had $54,000 of unpaid bills. And no money. Which created a problem. And so there was a lot of discussion as to what to do and how to get out of trouble. And so, one of the discussions was that perhaps the best thing to do would be to go dark as a theater. Now, in theater talk, going dark doesn't mean that you close the place, it just means you don't do anything. Everything is shut down. In addition to that, the talk was about going bankrupt. Well, there was a local businessman who felt that it was not fair to our creditors to declare bankruptcy and leave them holding the bag, and that was a tune of about $80,000. And so, the local businessman loaned the Paradise Performing Arts Center $80,000 to pay all the debtors and all of the other private notes that had come in. Well, then the next decision is what do we do? So the next decision was, we did go dark as a theater. And that meant that those who were salaried employees were laid off with no promise of coming back to work. And then shortly thereafter, a miracle occurred. And that was, a sweet lady who lived in Paradise for many years by the name of Jenny Jensen, she passed away, and she left the Paradise Performing Arts Center a little over $250,000. So there was some discussion as, well, what do we do with the $250,000? And the first thought that goes to mind is, well, pay the mortgage down. Well, that's a good thought, but then we'd have a mortgage of $237,000 and still no money to operate. And so a decision was made, that instead of being a sponsor for shows, because historically, whenever the Performing Arts Center sponsored a show in the theater, we would lose between $2,000 and $5,000 per show. Plus, we had salaried employees. And so the decision was made that what we would do is that we would become a rental facility, and that we would, as the members of the board, would operate the facility. Big undertaking. Bear in mind, there is no financial compensation for being on the board. A gentleman by the name of Bert Chumler stepped up and said that he would take on their responsibility, and he in essence, did the job of the three hired employees. He was kind of the secretary, he was kind of the manager, he was kind of the tech guy, and he did an amazing job. And what we did, as a board, we began to rent out the theater. The idea being is that when we rent the theater, we lost no money. We paid off the $80,000, we paid off the private notes of $21,000 and the $26,000. So at that point, the only thing left was the mortgage. So what we've done over the past few years, is that we've operated as a rental, we rent the theater, anyone who comes and wants to rent it, except these guys, they have to pay a rental fee. By so doing, we have been self-supporting. The only thing that we take from the money that Jenny Jensen left is, we use it to pay the mortgage. In the year 2012, we had the opportunity to sell the property that the senior center sets on, and with the money that they paid us for that property, we paid the note down and renegotiated our note with Rabo Bank. And so we went from having a 7% note to a 4% note, and it reduced our monthly payments. So here we are now. Now Bert, he got tired, and so instead of retiring, he moved to Portland Ordnance. So now we have no facility manager. And fortunately for us, a gentleman by the name of Kent Sprague joined our board, and he picked up where Bert left off, and he has done an amazing job of running our facility. So if you call, check really, yeah, he needs a... Now, what we've done is, any monies that come to the Performing Arts Center in the way of donations, unless the donation is for a specific purpose, all of that money has gone towards the mortgage. In the year 2013, we started what was called the ME300. The idea being is, at that point, we needed 300 people to donate $1,000, and the mortgage would be paid. So, money that's come in, and we just recently received some money from a trust from a sweet lady that passed away, and she's left us money. So where are we now? Well, you know where we started, we were in debt over $500,000. We have no debt. No debt. All of our bills are paid, we have no credit card bills. And, all we need to pay off the Paradise Performing Arts Center is for 150 people to donate $1,000. That's where our mortgage is now, $150,000. So who gets the thanks for this? Well, the people of Paradise who have donated. Now, how can you help? Well, one way would be to put us on your will and then die. That is a little radical, but we'll accept the money. The other way would be to go to your family and friends. Form a group, donate $1,000 to the ME300. You can make payments between now... Our mortgage comes to August 2017, and our goal is to not have to renegotiate. So we would like to raise, in the next, what's that, 14 months, we'd like to raise $150,000, and then the Paradise Performing Arts Center will be free and clear. That's our goal, and you can help. So we will accept your donations, there's a nice box out there in front of the donation thing. Don't be embarrassed, if you only want to donate 500, we'll take it. So bear in mind, any funds that come to the Paradise Performing Arts Center in the way of a donation, goes to the mortgage unless specifically directed for some other reason. We appreciate you being here. I guess the best way to get people here is have some controversy. Good night, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parrott. Let's all give him another round of applause, and thank the Paradise Performing Arts Center for having us here tonight. At this time, I would like to welcome you all to the continuance of the January 29th, 2016 Special Meeting of the Paradise Irrigation District Board of Directors, dated Monday, February the 8th, 2016, at 6:30 PM. Right now, I'd like to ask everybody in the public and board members to please silence your cell phones. If you have to make a call, I would ask that you maybe step out into the hallways up above, or keep it real quiet, if we could. If you'd all join me right now, like to stand, we're gonna say the Pledge of Allegiance.
This way?
That way?
Wrong way?
They're both there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Georgiana, could I have a roll call, please?
Director Bill Kellogg?
Here.
Vice President Doug Flesher?
Here.
President Sep Corolla?
Here.
Director Larry Duncan?
Here.
Director Ken Hunt?
Here.
Thank you, Georgiana. I'd like to ask everyone to remain respectful of others this evening, we all know why we're here. It's been some heated times in this town, talking about this issue, so please keep your emotions in check, and we will get through this with flying colors. Right now, I would like to open up the public hearing portion of this meeting regarding proposed increases to water rate services, and consider, one, oral statements and written protests received regarding the proposed rate. Only written protests submitted in accordance with Prop. 218 and not withdrawn by the close of the public hearing will be considered in determining whether there is a majority protest on there. We've already done Item 2, which was public participation at the last meeting, so if any of you are looking at the agenda and see that on there, I just wanted to let you know that we have already covered that in the January 29th meeting on there. So at this point, we have a presentation from legal counsel, and also the general manager, and let's go ahead and proceed with that. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can you hear me? There we go. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. There are, for those standing, there's some open seats, if folks wouldn't mind squeezing in. Looks like there's plenty of open seats. My name's Dustin Cooper, I'm an attorney with the Minasian Law Firm. We serve as general counsel for the district. I'm gonna go through Proposition 218 and then tonight's procedures briefly, and then Manager Barber will speak after me, and then there will be a period of questions by the board, potentially. Then we'll get to opportunity for public input from folks in the audience. I have never been asked about Proposition 218 more than the last 60 days or so. I was joking a little while ago that I was having breakfast with my daughter at the Calico Kitchen, and a couple people came up to me and asked about various things about Proposition 218. So, I wanna run through that briefly, what it is, and what it is not, and why we're here So Proposition 218 is actually a provision in the California Constitution. It was put there by a voter initiative in 1996. As many of you have commented in prior meetings, it is somewhat of a strange process. It's not like our normal electoral process, where you go to the ballot box and submit a piece of paper. It's a notice, and then the onus is on you as a customer to submit a piece of paper. One thing to keep in mind is that prior to 1996, before Proposition 218, there was no opportunity for public input, really, at all. What happened when there was a proposed rate change is, the board would consider the item at a regular public meeting, and by majority action, they could affect a change in rates. So there was no 45-day process, there was no opportunity for written protests. Now there is, but before Proposition 218, that voter involvement didn't exist, at least not directly. Another thing, for folks that are interested in Proposition 218, if you wanna read it, or if you have read it, keep in mind that there are differences between the process to raise fees, which we're considering tonight, and the process to raise what are known as assessment or standby rates. The procedure involved, as specified by the Constitution, is different. So what is that procedure? The first step in the analysis is to conduct a cost of service study. And the board considered a cost of service study and actually adopted it at its December 8th, 2015 Board Meeting. That started the Proposition 218 process the following Monday. Step 2, you all received mailed notices of the proposed rate change. Let me finish, you'll all have an opportunity. The public hearing is required by law to be conducted not less than 45 days later. That date was originally scheduled for January 29th, and then continued till tonight. Step 4, I quoted this because that's the key language. "If written protests against the proposed fee or charge are presented by a majority of owners of the identified parcels, the agency shall not impose the fee or charge." We know that as the majority protest provision. And then finally, there are legal requirements for the fees that are set forth in those sections of the Constitution. So tonight's procedure, when we ultimately get to the public comment portion of tonight's hearing, you'll all have an opportunity to speak. If you are interested in speaking, I see we have a lot, please submit a comment card, if you haven't already. I have the comment cards from the January 28th meeting, so I'll read from those first. We're gonna queue up, you see the numbers here, 1 and 2, I'll direct you to one or the other aisle. One point of clarification, you have the right to speak, you are not obligated to speak. Your vote will count whether you speak or not. And finally, if you do not submit a protest, your oral comments will not count. In the counting of the protests, only the written documents will count towards the Your protest, if you've already submitted it, can be withdrawn up until the close of the public hearing, or if you have not submitted your protest yet, you can do so up until the close of the public hearing. I'll give you plenty of advance notice, once we're running out of cards, people have all gotten their chance to speak. I'll give you a final warning, that now is your opportunity to either submit your protest, if you haven't already, or to withdraw it, if you've changed your mind. After the close of the public hearing, we'll transition into a count of the protests. The key number there is, 10,537 notices were sent to identified parcels. That means that a majority is 5,269 or more. So what do we do if we receive more than 5,269 protests? The disinterested vote counters will do an initial count to see where we stand. If the count is in excess of 5,269, we will have to validate those votes. What I mean by validate is, the law says you're entitled to one vote per parcel. So if somebody submitted 50 votes for their one parcel, we would only count one vote. So that validation may happen tonight, or it may be, we may need to continue it to another time. The key takeaway is that the vote counting will be done in public. Whether it'll be done tonight in public, we're probably gonna use this table here, I would imagine.
Can bring some out.
Okay. You're all welcome to watch. If we have to go to that validation stage, it'll be done also in a public process, you will all be welcome to observe the counting. If the protests received are less than that 5,269 vote figure, then the Board of Directors may consider the resolution, which would actually implement the rate change. And I'm gonna transition to Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Dustin. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. It's really nice to see that a large group of people are interested in their water company. I wanna clear up a few things, in case you've known or didn't know, because there's a lot of information being spread out there. But, I've been here for 47 years, this is my hometown. I care about this town, and that's why I'm here. So, what you've been presented with, and what I'll explain tonight, is what we're trying to do to keep this operation running, and be the best district we can. How'd we get here? Well, this is a chart of our restricted and non-restricted cash. That was our reserves, our savings. You can see back in 2009, we're at $10 million. You see how much of that was green? A lot of that green is because when we borrow money as a district, we are required to have the last year's payment in reserves at all times. So that stays green and in our reserves until we make our final payment. So a good part of the reason that green shrunk, is we actually paid off debt. These are the expenses that we worked with, this is off the budget, approved by the board, with an addition of an emergency reserve that was put in there, and this was the starting point for evaluating potential rates. Why are we doing this? What's driving this increase? One thing that I found out that I wasn't very clear, or could have brought out to the public a whole lot more, was state mandates are driving a lot of this. A lot of people complained about getting punished for conserving. Well, I'd like to tell you that we lost $750,000 from those reserves, because you guys conserved like we asked. But, listen. If you talk to your friends and neighbors that live in the pines, they were required to cut a certain percent, and if they didn't, their volume rate doubled. Same thing happened in Chico. In Paradise, we asked you to conserve, we set some parameters for outdoor watering, but there was no fines to anybody if they used more than what we asked them to conserve. We also have another state mandate, some of you may know about, and that's our Process Water Recycle Project. That project is brought on because we have a permit right now to release our processed water, the water we use to flush our clarifiers and backwash our filters. We now return it to ponds, and then it goes into Megalya Reservoir. Well, that's no longer allowed. These rules come, they start the federal government, and they work their way down, and they continually lower the amount of contaminants that can be in that water we release. We finally hit a point of no return. So we embarked on a process to no longer return that water back to Megalya, but instead clean it up and return it to the headworks of the plant. So far, we spent about $750,000 engineering that work, and we've got about $850,000 to go. This isn't a project we were all excited about doing, but it's something we have to do. We're faced with $10,000 per day, fines from the state, if we don't continue to proceed, trying to move forward and solving this problem. So you can see that those two things, back when we last raised rate in 2011, those weren't on the parameters. They were unplanned expenses, and we've depleted reserves to keep those projects moving forward. Now keep in mind, last year in the drought, state came down to Paradise and mandated a 36% reduction. If this board was to choose on their own, based on our studies and our evaluations and the levels of our storage, we would have only asked you for 20%. But because the state stepped in and forced us to work harder to get conservation, and you guys knocked it out of the park, we exceeded the 36%. So I can report to you that as of this weekend, all our reservoirs are full and they're spilling. So unfortunately... Yay, that's good. Unfortunately, all that water you saved is now heading downstream, because we filled up. We got word this week that the state is going to extend those regulations, and they're gonna ask our community to cut 33% next year, when we have full reservoirs. This is something that I'm gonna work with this board to figure out, how do we respond to that? How fair is that? I don't think it's very fair. Had a lot of people ask, where are the cuts? We've reduced our capital expenses for several years, quite a few years. We're proposing a rate structure to our community to maintain the level of service we currently provide. We have about 25,785 people we serve in our district, with currently 37 employees, so that's about one employee per 700 people, to make sure you have clean drinking water. And when you turn that top on, it comes on. We did some checking, to make sure we weren't overreaching, so the 10K plan, if you look at it, is 1.61% of the mean household income in our community. And the 3K plan is 1.05. What the experts say for affordable is 2%, so we're not outside of the ballpark. We've had questions about wetland option at the treatment plant, why aren't you looking at that? This board's looked at that. We've brought in experts, we spent $35,000 on consultants to evaluate that, but at the end of the day, the majority of this board determined that those wetlands are gonna continue an MPDS permit, so where are we gonna end up with? What else are they gonna lower that we can't meet? These constituents are continually being changed by the US EPA in California, and the levels are getting lower and lower and lower. The latest proposal we looked at would remove hundreds of trees near Megalya Reservoir. So it's not something that we haven't looked at, at all. We've evaluated it, and we've determined that the best course of action, nobody likes it, but right now it's a $15 million project to solve that problem. Again, another state mandate that's causing that $15 million project. A lot of people talked about our new facilities. This is a picture of our old corp yard, sorry, this is an old slide, moved it forward, over on Black Olive. It was not a very functional place for people to work. So back when, shortly after I got here, we did a strategic business plan, and we focused on finding new facilities with one key... on finding new facilities with one key issue: for safety of our employees and for efficiency. So at the end of the day, we purchased the property that is north of our office, and we purchased it for $750,000. But we got a $300,000 trade for that old corp yard. So the net cost was $450,000. The long-term plan was to build an office in front of that. And then we got an opportunity next door with the old AAA office, and we were able to purchase that and remodel it for about $900,000 all-in. So at the end of the day, our cost is about $2.5 million, which for the facilities we have that'll last us for many, many years ahead, that's a pretty good deal for government work, so to speak. So now let's get on to these rates. You can see our existing rates at the top and the proposed rate. Pardon? Well, that's as big as I can make it. I can, I think all of you probably have seen it, but the bottom line is, is that 10K plan provided a 13-unit allotment to people, 13 units with no cost for $54.31 a month, and then it jumped to a Tier 1 rate. And then we provided options. I understand, and we understand, that we have a community with vast, different needs for water. Some people use very little, some people use a lot. So we provided optional plans for you folks to try and fit within Prop 218, but recognize your different needs. Now, keep in mind, Prop 218 has no provision for low-income rates, and it has no provision for conservation. That's its current position. So I worked with legal counsel very closely to try and come up with a plan that worked for everybody. It also recognized the facts that our costs are largely fixed. If you've got a chance to see my workshop online, you'd have seen it, but about 97% of our costs are fixed. What that means is, when you guys conserve 41% in August, our costs don't go down 41%. They're almost the same as they are normally. So we provided this rate choice plan, and we didn't try to trick you. There was no gotcha here. You couldn't choose the wrong plan. You could come in at the end of the year or any point in the year, and if there's a better plan that fit your needs, you could have adjusted, and you would have got a credit on your plan going forward, on your account. But at the bottom line, I've got a room full of people here. Never seen so many people so interested in PID, and I appreciate it. And I heard you, and I heard what your concerns were. I heard concerns about paying for water in the winter that you couldn't use, and why should you pay for it? I heard people complain about how complex the process was. How do I pick a plan? We tried to make it as easy as possible, but I get it. It's confusing. It's very difficult, and I heard you. Why is this picture up here? That's a Prop 218 notice, and my dog didn't like it either. She ate it. So what you'll see, hopefully you picked one in the back, I've generated, based on last Friday's, or Friday goes meeting, listening to the people, going online, seeing all the Facebook comments. And this is probably our first foray into what social media can spread the word. It spread a lot of information, not all of it correct, I must tell you, but it did get you out here tonight. So I proposed to the board earlier today, emailed it out to them. So today was the first they saw it, and there's copies in the back for you folks, if you didn't grab one, of a modified rate proposal. Because we did hear you. We are, you know, we want, we are your water company. We want to provide you what makes you happy. So we're proposing a simplified rate plan. It's much simpler than what we had. So every equivalent meter would be charged $33.47 a month, a little more than our B-rate currently is now, and each unit of water would be $1.46. So it's less, it's less cost than the 10K plan. We made sure that that occurred. I crunched through these numbers because this board needed to be assured that this is a lower-cost proposal. It keeps you folks from paying for water in the winter that you can't use, which I heard loud and clear, and it's simple. So what does this mean? Couple of things we did to do this is I had to slow our reserving down. You know, our reserves have gone very low, and one of the proposed rate, things about the proposed rate was to get those built back up again. So in this proposal, it slows it down from $600,000 a year back down to $350,000 a year. So we've got money when an emergency happens. But we slowed that rate down. So the overall cost of the rate each year dropped $250,000. We also included, as we did in the other plan, a reduction for irrigation. Our irrigation customers, there's not very many of them, they're a key part of this community, and they don't need treated water, but, and they were kind of the founding fathers of this district. So this board and other boards have always recognized that the Ag folks shouldn't have to pay the full rate. They also cut back well in droughts. They're a good partner for us, and they help us maintain our water rights. We also recognize that school districts and our Parks and Rec districts have a really good tie to our youth, and those two folks do a lot of work with our youth. They work with us. The school district works every year with 4th graders with us, and Water Education, the Parks and Recs work with us. So there's a reduction for them from what I proposed for per-unit rate down to 35 cents a unit, which was originally proposed. Modified plan, there's about 1,000 copies were in the back, in the entry, so they're out there. What's the impact to seniors? Well, in this process, much like the originally proposed plan, the multifamily rate is dissolved into a business rate. I couldn't justify under Proposition 218 how we could continue with the multifamily rate structure that we have in place now. And whenever we make a change, we got to get back in compliance. So many of our seniors, especially low-income folks out there, live in trailer parks, apartments, multifamily-type situations. And so with this transition, we're going to have the average for all of those multifamily A-rate, those are our low multifamily users, is going to see an annual reduction of about $105 per equivalent dwelling unit or home. And of the 157 accounts we have, 124 of them is going to see a reduction from our current rates today, not the proposed rates. So although we can't specifically do anything for low-income folks, et cetera, through Prop 218, this transition does provide a benefit to them. How do we compare to our neighbors? A lot of people want to know how we compare to our neighbors. Our original proposal was really hard to compare to our local other providers. But this one's pretty easy. This is the proposal, 33.47 total per month, $1.46 a unit in year 2016. And up in Delora, they pay $25.82 a month, a little lower, but they're at $3.29 per unit. So I think it's as comparable as you can get. We're trying to listen to you folks and provide an alternative. Again, value. I wouldn't be supporting my industry if I didn't make you all recognize what a value clean, safe drinking water is. I feel for those folks in Flint, Michigan, because they thought they were getting good product, and they didn't. But you are here. I won't go through all of these, but about a half cent a gallon is what we're looking at for clean drinking water. And utilities, how do we compare to other utilities? And that's something for you all to reflect on your own. What's my cable bill and what's my cellphone bill compared to what my water bill would be? Water's very important, and I'm not going to say it's not. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, George.
Sir, you'll have an opportunity later.
Okay, I will now ask the board if they have any questions for legal or the general manager of what we just saw. Director Kellogg?
No questions.
Director Flesher?
No questions at this time.
Director Duncan?
Question for legal. If we do change the, if we do change the, to the alternate rate, will this not, will this go along with Prop 218?
You, as a board, need to, we've discussed this before. Proposition 218 sets the ceiling. So in order to take any action today, the first prerequisite is that you don't have a majority protest, which we've yet to determine. So assuming there's no majority protest, your proposed rate, the, help me out, George, the 10K plan sets the ceiling. What you need to decide as a board, and George has done an analysis to support this, is that the modified approach results in a reduction across the board for all customers as compared to that 10K plan.
I knew the answer, but I wanted the public to hear it.
But keep in mind, if there's a majority protest, you can't, you can't do that.
Right. Thank you.
Director Hunt?
Just a clarification in regard to the 218 law. What you showed us on the screen up there said owners of the parcels were the votes that counted. How do we reconcile that with renters?
Well, remember, I also said there will be one vote per parcel. So if there's a scenario where the owner of the parcel submits a protest, the tenant of the same parcel submits a protest, we're only going to count one. The unique situation that is unresolved in the law is, let's say the owner stands up and is supportive of the proposed rate change, and the tenant says, I'm not supportive. I'd have to, we'd have to deal with that on a case-by-case basis if that happens.
Not likely to happen, though, because if you support the process, you simply don't return a ballot.
Right. It would likely be, as I said, somebody speaking in favor, and then us flagging that their same tenant for the same property submitted a protest. That's unlikely to happen.
I had a question. Some people said they didn't get the notices. Some people said they didn't get the notices. Could you explain to them why they didn't, might not have?
I can't speculate. I know the district's consulting firm prepared the mailing, and it was, I believe, postmarked the 14th of December 2015. The notice went to all parcels that we have record of in the district. The record owners. So PID bills go to owners, not necessarily to tenants in all cases. So on occasion, if the tenants, the owner may have received the notice, whereas the tenant may not have.
Okay, as a point of clarification for the public, and this might answer the one gentleman's question, for a $1.46 per HCF, clarification of how many gallons is in one HCF?
That's 748 gallons, same as current.
Thanks. And I don't, approximately 750 gallons per HCF, which is the $1.46 for 2016. No more questions from the board? Yes, Loretta.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes, you have three votes, three parcels, three votes. Thank you, Loretta. Sir, this was only for the board to ask, but I'm going to go ahead and entertain you, but this will be the last one.
We were, the protests that we did were for the 3K, 10K, et cetera. Now, am I understanding from Mr. Barber that you are going to be voting on this rate modification plan? I don't know why we're here.
We might possibly be voting on an alternate Plan B that he just showed you a couple minutes ago. Okay, at this time, I am going to turn the meeting over to legal counsel, who will then open the public comment section, or comment session.
Okay, we will very shortly begin reading names off of the cards here. Before we do so, just a reminder, if you want to speak, please fill out a card, submit it to the box in front. We'll go through in the order submitted. There's number one aisle, number two aisle. To keep things moving, I will call names and say one or two, and if you can queue up, we will have, we've devoted three minutes per speaker. I realize a lot of you wish to speak. You certainly, again, you have the opportunity to. I don't want to dissuade you, but you do not legally have to. If you want to submit your protest, that's adequate. Your vote will count. If, you know, I suspect that we're going to start hearing repetition. That's fine, but consider just joining the comments of an earlier speaker rather than just restating what they've already said. The board last Tuesday asked me to conduct a public hearing. They are, if you ask questions, it's absolutely fine. The board is going to remain silent and take notes, however. Once we get through everybody's comments, we'll open it back up to board discussion, and at that time, if they want a question answered that you folks have brought up, they can, they can ask that of staff or of myself. And finally, I know this is a divisive issue. Let's please all try to remain respectful. Let's not talk over each other. If that happens, I'm going to give you one warning, and if it continues, we'll ask you to leave. So please, let's be respectful. I will give you a notice when your time is lapsing, and, but other than that, I'll try not to interrupt you. So the first couple speakers, Mr. Richard Zumwalt. My apologies in advance, by the way, folks, if I mispronounce your name. Mr. Zumwalt, aisle one. Second up, Deborah Matthews, aisle two. Third up, aisle one, Renee Eagleson.
Good evening. My name is Richard Zumwalt. At the January 29 PID board meeting, I handed out 100 copies of my alternative water rate plan that I called Plan B. Many of you here should have a copy of Plan B in your hand. I devised Plan B in response to the convoluted, complicated, and unfair original PID water rate plan. I prepared a speech to promote Plan B that I was going to give tonight. Late this afternoon, I received word that the PID general manager, George Barber, developed a new revised water rate plan for the next three years. It very closely resembles my alternative rate plan. I am now in favor of the proposed modified rate plan as outlined on Attachment A on the PID handout. I urge the people here to support it, as it is basically what I have proposed. I also would urge the Paradise Irrigation District Board members to pass the modified rate plan tonight. We are very fortunate to have some of the best water in the country. Passing the proposed modified rate plan tonight will ensure that we will continue to have excellent water in the future at reasonable rates.
Deborah Matthews, not present. Renee Fogelson, aisle... Renee Fogelson, aisle one. Fay, odd, Fay A.
Fay Antonarios is absent tonight.
Okay.
I'm Renee, I'm Renee Eagleson. I am a little bit confused tonight. You have come in and offered a plan and are asking people to be talking about a plan other than the one that we came here to protest. So I am going to speak to the plan that we came here to protest about, because that is what is on our agenda. One of the things that stuck out to me on the choose-your-own-rate plan is that it pitted low-income users against high-income users. Using calculations that were in the 55-page document, if you figure that out, it shows that low-income users at the 3 and 6K plan are paying $2.08 for their HCFs that are within their plans. If you look at the HCF cost to the 30K and 60K users, their rates for their use was 50 cents estimated HCF. So it was really an imbalance of the fees, trying to persuade us that you were benefiting the low-income or conservative users. I had an opportunity at the last meeting on the 29th to speak to a gentleman that was sitting next to me. He was showing me his rate usage. He had relatively high usage, and he said, "If I'm going to get 44 HCFs within my plan, I'm going to use it, even if I need to run it out into the street." Now, I'm sure that his emotions were caught up in that, too, and I don't know his name, so I wouldn't report it if I did. But I've talked to a number of people, and that was the same consensus that they had about this evasive, or what I call the co-mingle water use, because they figured if I'm paying for it, I'm going to use it. The other thing that was astounding to me at our last meeting on January the 29th was the reaction of the board members sitting right in front of me now, that we had several hundred people at that meeting in a room that was a capacity of 48. The other issue was that it was raining out, and we had members of the community that were standing out in the rain, trying to get their ballots in. And the solution by the manager was to put speakers up at the outside areas so that they could hear. Fortunately, the speaker system bombed, and it didn't work, and the people, as they were pounding on the windows, kind of drew us to the point that this would be the time to change a venue. However...
Please conclude.
I will conclude with saying that there's two board members, Ken Hunt and Larry Duncan, that need to be removed from this board.
Kristin, Kristin or Christine Kavanaugh, aisle one. David Kinzinger, aisle two. William Toci, Toci, T-O-C-I.
What I came to talk about was the original plan, which now it sounds like we have an alternative plan, which I, I can live with. So I'm not sure how this is happening. Do you have to get enough protests to put down the other plan, so we can go to this plan? Or, I don't, I don't understand that. So can we just get some clarity on that? Do we have to withdraw our protests in order to get the alternative plan? Can someone clarify that? Also, I, the last board meeting was the first board meeting I've come to, and I was troubled by several of the board members the last speaker referenced, in when there were so many people who couldn't, who, who were complaining and worried about this new plan that you had submitted, weren't able to talk, and instead, your concern was that people would filibust and, and not let this get voted in. Your concern should be, how come so many people are against this, and maybe we should reexamine this? You're serving us, and we should have a, an agreement of some sort. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, David Kinzinger. William Toci. Frank Dodini.
So William Toci on mic two here. Is this on? There we go. I thank you for this opportunity to speak. I have two water parcels, so I looked up the PID on the internet and went to the terms and conditions, because right off the get-go for this proposal, I wanted to get out of the 10K plan, because I can serve in the wintertime like everybody else. Our yards don't need it, especially with the nice rains we've had, December, January. And I said that shouldn't be a, a problem until I got into the terms and conditions, especially number two, which states that if I choose a low rate, and then as the weather improves and my garden needs watering, I move to the higher rate, I should be able to move from one rate to the other without a penalty. And the penalty that I, as I read further, was that I would be retroactively charged for the higher rate back through till February, and then next year, it would go back to January as I interpreted it. And then I'm giving up, also, if I agree to it, my rights. I agree to waive and release any rights I may have under the California statutes, California Constitution, or the federal statutes and constitution to channels valided Paradise Irrigation District water rates or the fees and charges collected there under. So I really don't want to give up what rights I have just to change my rate. And the, that would, the way I interpreted it, and it's clear as muddy water, as far as I'm concerned, my bill in June, when I went to the 16K rate plan, would have a retro $190, excuse me, $125 assessed to that, and then that bill for June would equal $190. Now, if I'm wrong in that interpretation, please tell me so, and then I'll move on, and hopefully, the Plan B rate gets approved. But right now, I'm commenting on your, your tiered structure, because that's what we are here for. And if we don't have enough protests that get us over the hump in favor of recalling that rate, then the way I understand it, that's the way that the rate system that will be approved tonight, or after the ballots are tallied. Thank you. I didn't hear a response. Am I correct in assuming that there's going to be retroactive on my June bill if I choose the higher rate?
The board's noted your question, sir. If they decide, they'll ask it later. Frank Dodini. Janet Hood. Aisle two, Janet Hood.
My name is Frank Dodini. I've been a resident of Paradise for 10 years. I would like to throw my support to Mr. Zumwalt's comments in support of the new rate plan that was outlined by Mr. Barber, as a more sane and fair rate structure, so that people would be encouraged to conserve. Obviously, and you're going to hear this all night, people don't, people's water usage is not the same every month. It's always going to be less in the wintertime than it is in the summertime, so people should have, be empowered to conserve during the wintertime, so that they don't have to let their landscaping die in the summertime. So that's, to me, that's the Achilles tendon of this, of that rate plan. If this new rate plan that's been suggested can cover most of the balance costs for PID, fixed costs, that's great. One comment I would like to make regarding fixed costs, because that term's been bandied around quite a bit. I grew up in Gridley, so I'm used to small towns. For 30 years, I operated my business in Southern California, and the going rate for my services down there was $100 an hour. When I moved to Paradise, I realized that the population and the demographics could not support that, so I was willing to cut my fee to half of that to balance, to be affordable for this community. To me, you, you get paid whatever the market can bear, okay? The fact that I accepted fees, half of what I charged in Southern California, did not mean that I was any less qualified to do my job, okay? I would like to respectfully suggest that upper management considers that same thing.
Janet Hood. Cheryl Sealy. Bruce Roberts. Aisle one. Andy Askin. Aisle two.
I'm Bruce Roberts, resident of Paradise, live at 469 Circlewood Drive. I'm the fellow that'll have the water running down the street. So we'll get that straightened out. If you adopt a new plan, I'll guarantee a 469 Circlewood. You can come look. Now, I don't know what we're doing here now. I have no idea. Are we, I know I have three minutes, but I don't even know, I'm totally prepared to discuss the old plan. You've bait and switched us with a new plan. I have no idea if we're even legally, do we have to continue the hearing? Do we need a new 45-day notice for the new plan? I'm not the attorney here, but if you're going to bait and switch, you know, maybe the attorney ought to figure this out. Anyway, I'm in favor, I am in favor of the new system, to keep it simple, stupid, and just pay the bill. Just don't make it complicated.
Thank you, sir. Andy Askin.
My name's Andy Askin.
Just a second, sir. Gene Ortiz, aisle one. Vincent Childs. Sorry, sir, go ahead.
That's all right. Mr. Barber probably won't admit this to you, but he gets his best ideas from the doughnut shop. Couple of observations, since we have two plans in front of us. The new plan, the alternate plan, solves one problem, and that's the imbalance in the rate fees over the course of a changing needs level year-long. So low in the winter, high in the summer, the only way to save your butt is to pick the high rate, otherwise the unit charges would bury you. But don't be fooled. This new rate plan doesn't charge you any less money overall, it simply ties it more closely to your monthly usage. If you have 20 HCI's usage, under the old plan, it would cost you $45 a month. Under the new plan, it will cost you $66 a month. We're still looking at a giant increase here, and what I would recommend strongly to all of you is that you reevaluate your spending habits, one. Two, you more closely address the impact of the drought usage, or if you would prefer conservation, on your revenue stream, and that even with the new Plan B, that that only remained in place in any form whatsoever, since you're doubling the unit rates for the duration of a drought, and that it would go back to the original rates when the drought And my, my final comment, gentlemen, is a very serious one, given where we live. And I'm not going to talk about the economics of, you know, poor versus rich, but you do have an issue, and the danger is, by forcing people to choose a lower plan to meet their budgetary needs, you face the real danger of damaging landscape and trees, which have a danger of following, damaging housing, killing people, reducing property values, which lowers the overall revenues, and finally, if we have a ridge fire that's precipitated by people not sufficiently watering the vegetation, and we get a crown fire, none of us will be here to have the next meeting.
Gene Ortiz. Vincent Childs. Fay, and I'm sorry, Croceani. Mr. Ortiz first.
Gene Ortiz, 229 Redbud Drive. Gentlemen, I think that you need to go back and look at this Proposition 218 that you're using as an excuse for everything that we're going here. It's wrong. It's not the way it's supposed to be. Proposition 13, back in 97, just made it a law, that if you're going to dig your hands into our pockets for money, we have to vote on it, and that's the only thing that it cries for. And I know you're going to give you an argument, but it is going to be litigated all over the state of California, and it is now. But there are already people that are putting a protest on, and that's all it was. We have the right to vote on it, and we need the right to vote on it. I don't want to do your job. Don't tell me what you're proposing. You're supposed to bring up a good deal right at the moment that you put it out. That's what I pay you for. And it doesn't mean that these people up here are doing justice to us by sitting there and ignoring us. If it's making you fall asleep, take pills. Now, how long I got? I got another minute and 30 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vincent Childs, followed by Fay Croceani, followed by James Graham. James Graham, aisle two.
My name is Vincent Childs, and I'm, a couple of questions. It's about the cost of running a business. Sir, I realize that your salary has just been bumped up. You increased your salary by $4,000 to $5,000, now totaling $158,000, I believe, plus about another $38,000 in costs accumulated, such as retirement and things. That's fine, that's great, but that's nowhere near what the residents of Paradise make. It's very unrepresentative. That's, that's a rather large chunk of money. You also, they also mentioned a mean in there. I don't think mean and average are the same thing, am I correct? We're talking about income per capita here in Paradise? I'm guessing it's not too good. I noticed, I'm on social security. Is there probably a lot of people here? We didn't get a raise this year. We didn't get a raise at all. And I don't know why, sir, you've made a raise of $4,000 or $5,000. I'm sure you're probably doing your job well. You've been here quite a time, but that's not representative of our, our, our neighborhood here. A couple of questions. Maybe it's the cost of doing business which is bothering me a little bit. Your water treatment plant has been running on a system that's been mandated to be changed. You looked at several proposals. You chose the most expensive. You chose the one that about a $12 million proposal versus the one about 1.5 million, according to the online terms or investigations there on the board, or on the, on your website. You chose one of the most expensive ones, instead of choosing the much lesser, the $10,000 save, $10 million savings. I don't know exactly how your system works, but that seems... I don't know exactly how your system works, but that seemed like to be rather expensive. It just seems like there's better money, better spent. Also, the nice new building over there is very nice, it was impressive, and probably the town does deserve that, and you folks deserve that. But other jobs could've been done better. Putting in new pipelines was being met with federal dollars. On the, online, on your page, it showed that you did not get anywhere near done the amount of work that you claimed you were going to be doing with the dollars given. Now, also too, as other gentlemen spoke about this different raise all of a sudden here, I was looking at the one that you sent out, and I found about a 4% raise for three years running, and I thought, that seems kinda high, we didn't get any percentage raise in Social Security. So, here's this new rate here, and in 2018, I see the total service charge goes from 37, 33.75 to 42.38. That's about a 9% raise. That's kinda high, don't you think, compared to the rest of the cost of, cost of living in this country? Something seems wrong. Thank you for your time. I think we need to make some changes around here.
Fay Croceani, and again, sorry for mispronouncing your name. Not present. Mr. Graham, I failed to see that you submitted, you wish to submit a written comment, so I will read those for the board. You have a few here. First, please explain why the constructed wetlands is not a viable alternative to cleaning the discharge from the water plant. Second, will the PID consider a constructed wetland to clean the effluent from the municipal water plant? There are many examples that prove this system will remove aluminum and chlorine from wastewater. Constructed wetlands will remove more than aluminum and chlorine. What chemicals that you use are you concerned the wetlands won't clean out of the water? And finally, primarily, the rate increase is to fund the effluent cleanup. Would the board be willing to talk, to take a pay decrease to help for increased operating Did you wanna add, sir?
Those were my, my concerns. My main concern is, why is it that the constructed wetland is not being considered? Looking at the, the huge cost differential between the two, that is, that's my main concern. Because if, in an article, a small article I read in the news and reviews, it said that the board was worried about the wetlands couldn't take aluminum out of the effluent. Well, that's not true. There's hundreds of studies, and there's hundreds, there's over 1,000 plants right now that are doing just that. So, I wonder why the board, what, what did you, what advice did you get that, that made you sway towards the chemical plant instead of the wetlands project? That's what I'm concerned with. And if you're, if you're gonna talk about the 300 trees or so that have to be cut down to, to create the wetlands, in Brevard County, Florida, they did a similar project there, and it's now become a tourist trap because it, it, it takes, birds have come through there, and tourists are coming in, paying to do the bird watching and look at the animals that come into the wetlands. Constructed wetlands aren't necessarily surface cleaners, they're subsurface cleaners. So, I'm just curious why the board chose not to, to consider constructed wetlands instead of the chemical facility.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Foss, one. John Reichman, two. Peter Schwed, one.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. What proof do you guys have that my ballot, that I brought to your office, actually got to where it's to be counted? Because when I handed it, there was no secure box that it got put in, there was no proof that my vote was actually gonna be counted, other than that I was told, well, it's gonna go to some official who will count it. I have no proof, no guarantee whatsoever that that happened, and how does anyone else have any proof?
Leslie Foss. Peter Schwed.
It's Swedie, but it doesn't matter, nobody can pronounce it.
Sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Copper. Yeah, anyway, I know that a senator makes $175,000, and a president makes $450,000. I think other rates that are being charged around here for the people, and I think there's over nine people in the district, the working system here, are making over $100,000. I think that's rather high. Okay. I requested a protest form after the last January 29th meeting. When I went in to get a protest form plus another 50, I was told that I could only get one protest form for free. The other ones would cost me 20 cents apiece. And I went down to Ace Hardware, they gave me a stack of 100, which I think was very decent of Ace Hardware, and... I think that the ratepayers and everything, this should be counted twice tonight when we finally get to counting the votes. Doug Teeter wrote you a letter about this, and now he gave copies to all of you, and I passed it out to a lot of the people here in the meeting, the last one, and I think it should be voted on twice. There should've been a more secure system, just like the other fellow said, protecting these third-party board supervisors, anything like that, should've had control of these votes, not the Board of Directors. I talked to the Water, California Water Regional Quality Board, and they said that if Paradise was going along with their plans and everything, they would not impose a $3,000 fine or anything if due diligence is happening, and PID is working in good faith to meet compliance. I also heard from somebody, and it's probably not true, that Mr. Barber and Mr. Phillips are going to Washington, DC to talk to Doug Lamafa, and I think Doug Lamafa lives in Richfield. And I think a trip, I'll drive you down there myself, and it'll cost $10.
Thank you. Please conclude, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Linda Oslin, two. Tom Wall, Tom Wall, two. Ms. Oslin?
I'm Leslie Foss, State of Jefferson, time for 51. And as a bookkeeper since 1980, I believe as many people here do, that nobody in Butte County needs to make over 50,000 bucks. So, might be good to make a cut, and since God owns the water, please stop tyrannizing us. Time for 51.
Thank you, Ms. Oslin. Tom Wall, Henry Martin.
Linda Oslin. Let me just say that, number one, this was the original plan I'm speaking to tonight, the one we're here to discuss. The other one is a clear obfuscation and confusion tactic, and I know those tactics. The first plan was very poor, confusing, difficult to understand for most people, especially people on fixed incomes who do not get the paper, who have no computers, and I object to that strongly. Not all of us are online. The first plan and the board were poorly handled, that plan, and they're public, they're paying public. And I refer to the meeting, the first meeting of January 29th, when people, the one we referred to, when people were pounding on the windows and we were on there. We were admonished by Mr. Corolla that the public had two years to become, two and a half years to be, thank you, to become educated on this plan. Well, excuse me, you all had a lot longer since we know that Proposition 218 was voted in in 1996. Now, I have to budget my home differently than obviously you budget your business, our business, actually. And I would like to say that I am very disappointed that you didn't handle your budgeting, because I couldn't live without handling my budgeting the same way. And I think that'll do. Thank you for your time.
Tom Wall, followed by Henry Martin, then Jimmy James.
Thomas Wall, I grew up in Chico. Lendo Channel is not Chico Creek, that's just bull. Anyway, I live at 5654 Sierra Park Drive, formerly 284 Pearson. Think I'm the only property that's been singled out like that. It was the first divided lot in the Sierra Park subdivision in 1902. Midwell died in 1900. It was the southeastern portion of the Midwell Rancheria, one of the first subdivisions, Sierra Park, in the town of Paradise. I don't know, I've got a 1918 Roberts Rules of Order book at home, and this seems kinda slim, shady. Introducing this after we gathered all these protests. And I am appalled that conservation isn't treated with reduced rates. Someday, some young man's gonna create a clapper, a toilet that zaps our solid waste. It's gonna have to be dumped here on a ridge, because it's stupid to send it all down to the river. And I think that times are gonna have to change. And more consumption and a consumer-based economy, when it comes to water, especially residential water, is ignorant and stupid. The more I use, the what? The less I use, the more I conserve. I came from a foreign family in Durham. Yep. My grandfather came from, from Holland, he couldn't afford to go in the Titanic, or they wouldn't have been here. And my point here is, conservation should be rewarded. I took a bath every third day for you folks here in California, and my brother to farm, for us to eat, and this is an outrage. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. Henry Martin, Jimmy James, two. David Clemmons, one.
Good evening. My name is Henry Martin. I'd like to first speak to the sentiment of the community. I found 28 people home in a lot of homes. I didn't find anybody. But of the 28 people that I had found, only one thought she would not want to sign the complaint notice because she hadn't paid her rent for two months. So, you could just extrapolate that amount in the community, there would be, you're up against a public whirlwind. I was, I'm opposed to the methodologies you have used so far in order to keep the public informed. I think you were somewhat misled by your attorney, that you couldn't make recommendations to the elderly. How complicated is that you have a graph for 12 months of your water use, and you draw a line across the average, and you know which way you should go with the old unit? Now, you bait and switched us, and it seems to me like you should start all over again because you've confused us, and certainly the community at large has no idea what you, your revised moderate plan, or whatever you called it. And it may have shed some good light about, to keep our rates down, but I just saw it on the screen, and I, I can't speak intelligently about it yet until I see it, take a look at it. And I think the public at large is at the same, at the same point. To briefly touch on sending complaint notices to the public, I checked on it. It costs $250 to send 5,000 complaint notices to all your, your clients, and, or 10,000. So, and I checked out with the right copy people, and that wouldn't have been a great And that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Jimmy James, followed by David Clemmons, then Leslie Add. Jimmy? Not happy at all. That's the comment. Jimmy, I'll set yours aside if, we'll go through the not presents one final time. Mr. Clemmons, or Leslie Add?
David Clemmons here. I guess it really doesn't make any difference who votes. It doesn't make any difference who votes, it's who counts the votes that count. I think we probably ought to have a hearing just to determine the factual needs for this rate increase, just the factual needs. The sooner the better. That's all I gotta say.
Thank you, sir. Leslie Add. Ann Cruelder. Ann, you're welcome to speak, I can read your comment as well. I feel votes should be counted by an outside concern. This would be the fair and honest way. Also, the wages are way out of line for Paradise, where the average median income is $43,372. This water rate would have us pay more than Burbank and Los Angeles County too much. Okay. Robin Robar, followed by Gary Keenan. Maybe a Carrie. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Robin Robar, and I live on the property where my mother started having labor pains with me, on Foster Road. Anyway, I think we've kind of been ignoring the $18 million elephant in the room, which is the, the improvement that needs to be made, wants to be made, whatever. And I'd like to know if any of your 37 employees or five members of the board have gone to apply for any grants, or have thought about doing a bond issue on the whole thing, and not having it go through the users? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Gary Keenan, followed by Eric Gilson, Brian Batchley. Go ahead, sir.
How are you doing? This is my third or fourth meeting, and I'd like the opinion of Mr. Kellogg. I'd like to know how he feels about what's going on here. What I've noticed in coming to the meetings is there's been a whole lot of smugness going on, on one end of the board, and towards the other end of the board, there seems to be some fellows over there that seem to be a little bit more for the people. And that's what I have to say about it. So I'd really, like Mr. Kellogg recognized, Mr. Fletcher. One other thing I'd like to add is, I know you're not talking about the wetlands right now, and I know that there's a big, what's the word? There's sides taken on this one, let's put it that way. But one of the things I couldn't understand is why no one thought, well, what would it cost to send a guy or two down to Riverside for a day or two to find out just why it's working in Riverside, why they are able to dispose of their waste and make potable water for five towns in Riverside, and how it can't be done here? Because I don't like the way the $18 million project smells. It doesn't smell right to me. That's, that's my gut feeling, and I understand that, you know, maybe I'm coming out of left field here, but I get a real good feeling from Mr. Kellogg and Mr. Fletcher, and I sort of don't get a real good feeling from the other side of the board. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, I missed your name.
My name is Brian Bashley.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name's Eric Gilson. I help co-run the Paradise Seed Lending Library. Our goal is to put a seed in every child's hand and open up free gardening projects for different places around Paradise. And I have to say, you know, this, this rate that you're pushing out here is going to kill all that progress and make a lot of that very hard to do.
Thank you, sir. Gary Keenan, one last time. Not present. Donald Lucas, followed by Todd Anderson. Then Robert Castle.
Problem that we, the public, have with the rate hike is not just the rate hike, but the unfair implementation of paying for water that we're not using. Plan B, which was developed originally by, I believe it was Mr. Zumwalt, had a much better plan, and the plan that was presented tonight was much better, except two years from now, when it jumps up $10. Having been a board member in a school board, when we had issues that affected the public, we sought their input. Where we had one major one, we actually brought 70 people that were interested, brought them in to 10 different tables with one rep, and we were able to come up with ideas that we never could have. All of your ideas have been in-house and brought up there without any public input I would urge the board to seek public input on the wetlands and to have, to not just make a decision in-house. Already you've spent $750,000 on engineering, and you've got another $850,000 for engineering. So you're making the decision without any public input, and that's, what, $1.5 million? That you're paying towards a system that is going to cost a total of $20 million? It's ridiculous. The treatment at the last board meeting by two board members, they should be removed by the board for misrepresentation of the public that elected them. If the board does not wish to do that, which they can, then we will do a recall. I would, I would urge the board to seek public input for what solutions that there are and not just internalize it and have the board manager, who works for you board members, that you would have public input and not just take the ideas that he comes up with. Much better, but in two years, goes up $10.
Thank you, sir. Todd Anderson, followed by Robert Castle, then Angela Kassler.
Todd Anderson. When was this modification rate developed and introduced back to the public? I think it's an insult to the public's intelligence to introduce it here at this meeting when it has nothing to do with what this meeting was called for. And I agree with the last gentleman. I think a recall is in order, and, or you can just resign and save the public if you're You say that you care about the public and the well-being of the public anyhow. And here's another thing, is you said in this meeting that it was California's regulations that are causing all the financial stress, and the U.S. EPA, right? Well, here's a fact. We only have six representatives for all of Northern California, down there in Sacramento. So you're only going to get more of the same from Sacramento. More regulations, therefore, causing a higher price on water. And by the way, it isn't California, or Northern California, here in Paradise in particular. We're not short on water. We're not short at all here in Northern California. It's Southern California where they've overdeveloped the desert, and then they want us to pay for their water, or the governor wants us to pay. So they keep putting more regulations on to draw more money out of the public. So anyhow, my concern is, I have two senior parents who, my parents, my dad loves to garden, and this PID has threatened them consistently, every water bill, because they're always pushed up to, or over their limit. So you're always dinging my parents consistently, just because they want food that's naturally grown and not the GMO that you get at the stores. And with my last 30 seconds, I'll just point out that the general manager said that it's affordable, because California has a human right to water, and one of the most important ones is affordable. And just because his salary is $100-plus thousand dollars a year, that, and the average salary is $40,000, $43,000 is what I heard here, how about the people who were making $8,000 to $10,000 a year? Okay? They have a right to garden their land and produce food that's healthy for them, other than going to the grocery store and buying all that chemicals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Robert Castle, Angela Kassler, and then Jim Brand.
Hi. I'm Robert Castle. Thank you for the opportunity. You know, I'm very confused. I came here tonight to protest the tiered rate that I think we all did. So we filled out the protest forms, so are we protesting that still? But now we have a new plan. Now, I did the calculation on the tiered rate thing, and my rates for, under the new proposal, compared with what I actually paid in 2015, we're going to go up from 45% to 81%, depending on which plan I chose. Now, I have no idea on this new modified plan, whether I like it or not, because I just saw it. I can't, I can't do the calculation sitting here in the auditorium. So I think that's terribly unfair and may even be illegal. We probably need to have a new time period for the public to examine this new proposal. It may be very good, but how do we know? So I would urge the board to, if they're going to come forth with this new proposal, to give the public time to digest it, think about it, do the calculations, and then decide. So we can count these protest forms tonight, but I don't know what we're protesting, since you've taken the proposal that we originally were told off the table. So what are we protesting? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Angela Kassler, followed, sir, please don't interrupt. Folks, the board has instructed me to complete the public hearing component tonight. Then, once it's closed, the board is taking notes, and they will ask questions of staff and myself if they believe it necessary. Angela Kassler, followed by Robin Huffman, then Jim Brand.
I'm Angela Kassler. I'm glad everyone's here speaking up, because solutions do not come from silence, and so thank you for all of you who are saying that you're conserving here, too. I have a story about PID. Last summer, the water mains started leaking on our street. That day, I called, and all of the utility companies came out and marked the street. The next day, they had a road crew from PID with heavy equipment machinery, and they fixed the leak that same day. And I went and looked at my water bill, and I said, you know, my $22.95 service fee actually goes a long way for those three crew members as well. And they stopped that leak immediately, so I was pretty impressed by that. There is a lot of equipment that this company, who runs for us, actually maintains, and they are correct, that compliance is killing our businesses today. And I'm here to let you know that we do not have good jobs in Paradise. We have empty storefronts, high unemployment, and we do need to work together to do something about this, too. But I'm here today to say water is just cheaper than dirt, and it is our most precious resource. I conserve because I think it's important, not because of my bill. I actually only use about two to three HCF per month, so that's about 2,200 gallons of water. If I compare that, because I used to be a Del Oro customer and also a Cal Water customer, my rate at Del Oro would have been 35.26, 25.90 at Cal Water, and here at PID it's 26.20. So I'm paying way less than I would when I was a Del Oro customer. So I'm very glad that we're looking at a different rate change. I think that it is fair to continue to pay for usage. I also would like to say that today I bought a gallon of milk for $3.47. Today, I drank a gallon of water for half a penny. All right? Yesterday, I bought a gallon of gas for $2.30. Today, I drank a gallon of water for half a penny. All right? This is our water, and here in Paradise, we need to tell the state water board that they cannot have it. Okay? This is our water. Did you hear two years ago, they came up here and said, you will release this water to SoCal? We do a great job managing our water here at PID and in our town in conservation. We need to stand behind PID and make sure that this does not happen here in our town. We are a small town. They do think they can take advantage of us, and we need to say no, just like all of you are out here tonight. So in my company, the compliance costs have cost me $36,000 over the last year. PID's compliance issues are much more expensive than that, and I do agree with some of the speakers here tonight to have a citizens group to be able to get together to come up with some really good solutions. But when I was a Del Oro customer, when they did the intercharge fee from Lime Saddle to change that water system, we had to pay for compliance in our bills immediately, and my water bill went up in the winter-
Please conclude.
-to $178 and $208 in summer. This antiquated water system that we have today, we can't keep passing it down to the next generation. We do need to do something about it today. So it's really great that we're having this discussion. So I do hope that we can get behind this board and PID and solve this problem.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Robin Huffman, followed by Jim Brand.
Could you read the portion that I wrote on the card?
Board and staff, please do more vigorous and documented research or alternatives to the $16 million processed water recycling project. Consider, one, whole new water treatment plant with different technologies. Two, consider hybrid of two current ideas, a centrifuge for processed water, then release centrifuge, backwash to a wetlands. And that's it.
Thank you. So, you know, I realized you're between a rock and a hard spot with getting enough money to run our plant. My question is, how long will it take to pay down $16 million? How many years debt under this new rate plan, either the one we came to hear about or the one that's proposed tonight? $16 million of debt is a lot, and it ties our hands for all kinds of other projects that we could be doing, such as energy production to keep the cost down. You know, we do need to have some better ideas here, and I've been to several board meetings, and every time I've asked you the same question, why can't we systematically consider all alternatives instead of simply extending the current plant, which is aging, but to add pollution to virtually pure water from the sky? You know, we've got some of the best water in California already. There's, there are new treatment technologies available, and you need to systematically consider all alternatives when the project costs $16 million. That's just crazy. So would you please do that?
Thank you. Mr. Brand, followed by Serena Gualatuna, then Frank Dodini.
Good evening. My name is Jim Brand. I've been a resident of Paradise for 64 years. One thing I want to know is, I've seen all these figures here tonight, how broke we are. How can you pay for health insurance for five board members that I've heard is $1,500 each a month? That's $90,000 a year. And another thing, how are you coming up with these rates when you don't even know what we're going to do to fix the problem? I just don't understand that. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Serena, and unless there's two Frank Dodinis, sir, you've already spoken. Marcia, I'm sorry, McGill McCoyle, followed by Joss Kay Kinchello.
I'm Serena Gualatuna, and I'm very grateful for the water that we receive from you. I, I'm looking at this new attachment A that we just got tonight, and I, I believe it's going to cost more than, for instance, the, on the five, your five rates that you, we came to protest, on the lowest one at least, because I think it's $33.47 just for this basic, and then if you use one HCF of water, it's $1.40. then if you use one HCF of water, it's $1.46 for each one of those, and that's going to bring it up over. And what I came to talk about tonight was regarding the five-tier plan. And I wondered, since we, currently, we have a three-tier plan, and we pay for water up to a certain amount, and then if we run over, then we pay more, but we don't have to choose, it just happens, sort of like PG&E does. And I was told that it's, or I read or heard, that it was too complicated to do that now with the five-tier, but if we're already doing it with a three-tier, why can't we just have, okay, this is the basic rate, and then each HCF over a certain amount, maybe over eight or whatever it is that you determine, then you pay extra per HCF. And why do we have to choose? Because people, of course, use, most people who water their yards, use a lot less in the winter than in the summer, so why do we have to be penalized in the winter, just so that we can cover the summer months? Why isn't it just where we don't have to choose, we all have the same basic rate, and we have a certain allotted amount of HCFs, and if we go over that, then we start paying more? And that would equalize it, so that when we, in the winter, we wouldn't have to pay so much, and in the summer, we would pay a little bit more, but then we're using a little bit more. Thank you.[709.23][709.23](APPLAUSE)
Thank you. Marcia McGill, followed by Josh Kincello, then Michael Ledbetter. Sir, you've already had an opportunity to speak. I'm sorry.[725.73][725.73](APPLAUSE)
We'd like to hear him again.
Sorry, folks, I have a stack here of perhaps another 100 people that would like to speak. Out of respect to all the people, only one opportunity, please.[739.11][739.11](APPLAUSE) Marcia McGill, followed by Josh Kincello.[746.94][746.94](APPLAUSE) Either one, ma'am. Then Michael Ledbetter.
My name is Marcia McGill. I'm very pleased that you called this meeting tonight. I'm very pleased that you are sitting and listening to the voice of the people. I have a few questions. In 2006, we had a surplus in the general fund of $10 million. I would like you, we're accountable to our households and what we do with our money, so I am an educator, and I would like you to explain to this room what you did with that $10 million, because we don't yet have clean water.[808.01][808.01](APPLAUSE) In addition, it came to my attention that, I've been caregiving death and dying people for nine years, so I was not able to be at your board meetings and find out how you ran things. And I became available last week, and I found out, the flyer that you sent in December never reached my mailbox, so I didn't know about this. I found out two days before the meeting. I called, I think no questions is a stupid question, and so I asked questions, because everybody should be educated. So I have a lot of questions, and I think people in this room are looking forward to having answers. That being said, it came to my attention, and I'm still learning about how you work, that in the last, I'm going to just ask about the last five years, how many environmental impact reports you funded, how much you paid to have these done, how much time you spent on them, what decisions you made on them, if any, and also, why there was no additional bids, and you're using the same company for all of these.[905.69][905.69](APPLAUSE) Now, I'm not a fancy-dancy person. I'm on disability. I'm a teacher. But one thing I'm not is stupid.[926.82][926.82](APPLAUSE) And my question also is, it's kind of a statement question.
Please conclude.
This does not appear to be a rate increase. It appears to be a bailout, but that's a statement question. My last comment is a question, and that is, on the flyer that I located from a neighbor, where we got to check off of the box about the, what plan we wanted, on the back of it, it said, "And when you check off your plan, you lose your right to protest this." I couldn't figure that out at all. It was like, gosh, if I protest this, I have no say in my water, and maybe I won't get any water.
Thank you.
Maybe I can't drink water.
Josh Kincello, followed by Michael Ledbetter. And then I will read a statement from Stephen Dowery. While we're waiting, Stephen Dowery, while I oppose the currently, oppose the currently proposed rate increase, I do understand the need to keep up with increasing costs of operating and making improvements, et cetera. I just feel the proposed increase is exceedingly high and burdensome. I can understand an increase of something like 10% or even 12%, but the current proposal is just out of line. I urge the board to explore other options that might allow for a more reasonable increase. I also hope that rumors I've been hearing about protest forms being, shall we say, misplaced are not true.[1042.98][1042.98](APPLAUSE) Yes, sir.
That was mine, and I'd like to add one thing.
Go ahead.
Since I submitted that, everything has changed, as far as the new plan that was here offered tonight. I still agree, you know, with what I said. I think most of us here wouldn't mind a reasonable increase, 10%, 12%. We understand there's operating costs that go up, and lots of other expenses, and I think there can be a more reasonable increase that we can all handle without it being burdensome. The last thing is, I'm not an attorney, but I'm pretty sure that, since this was all based on the initial plan that was submitted, and our protests were submitted against that plan, I'm pretty sure you have to complete that process of counting those opposition forms. If they, if there's enough to make it 50% or better, then that's killed. I also believe that if you're going to propose a new plan, the entire process has to be started all over again, and we have to be given the opportunity to oppose that new plan.[1129.83][1129.83](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, sir. Josh Kincello, one final time, Michael Ledbetter. Nancy Parnell.[1140.58][1140.58](APPLAUSE) Yes, sir, thank you.[1145.01][1145.01](APPLAUSE) Sir, go ahead.[1147.21][1147.21](APPLAUSE)
I lived through the first...
We can't hear you, sir.[1180.65][1180.65](APPLAUSE)
My name's Mike Ledbetter, and I've lived here 47 years, went through the drought of '77, where they actually praised you for saving water, not saying you had to pay more for saving water. Secondly, what gets me is, we have a rental, that we live off of that money. We live off of about $18,000 to $20,000 a year, so I don't get it how you can't take a pay cut, and everybody else does, from the Emron scandals and everything else that's going on. Thirdly, what happened to all the money that's on our property tax bill each year that says 2% goes to the water district for the septic runoff? Thanks.[1224.71][1224.71](APPLAUSE)
Thank you, sir. Yes, Ledbetter. Nancy Parnell asked that we read the following: As a young widow sacrificing and struggling to be able to afford to keep my property value up with decent landscaping, I have pride in my house and community. I cannot, for the life of me, figure how you can rationalize charging me for my neighbors, my neighbors who have no pride in ownership, water bill? Ms. Parnell, would you like to add? Ray Groom, followed by Ken Baker.
Your mission statement is kind of interesting. It has a, the irrigation district is dedicated to the business of producing and delivering safe, dependable supply of quality water in an efficient, cost-effective manner, with services that meet or exceed the expectation of our customers. Now, that's your mission statement. There seems to be a problem with that. The vision statement is below that, the mission statement, also references that the district's vision is to achieve high levels of customer and employee satisfaction. I think there is a high level of employee satisfaction, just based on salaries. I think your salaries are pretty, pretty high.[1336.01][1336.01](APPLAUSE) But I think, based on the attendance tonight, your customers are very low, and so I, you need to look at your mission statement and make those corrections, maybe.[1352.42][1352.42](APPLAUSE) Your statement of, as I said, your statement of values, really, and your mission statement, is not consistent or congruent with what has happened. This proposal was given tonight, yet further confuses the, I don't know, 300 or 400 people we have here, 500 people. It's been poorly orchestrated. The presentation, the survey, not the survey, the notice of proposal fee to owners that was sent out, was probably one of the most poorly constructed government documents that I've seen in my 40 years in federal, state, and local governments. I have managed organizations the size of this, and I have more employees than this district does, and in a larger, much larger county, and I had two people that made over $100,000. Now, about the same amount of employees. Now, some of that, of course, is related to scientists. You've got some water specialists in this, in this organization that do have, will require higher pay. But generally, I think that the index, the indexing of salaries exceeds what the local market and what most folks earn here. So I encourage you to not just look at the water rates, we've got to go back and look at how you're spending your money. To spend this much money on engineering for various repairs, replacements of facilities, wetlands, et cetera, that needs to really be looked at. You should look at the most cost-effective solution, and I dare anybody in government to say that they can't cut 10% of their budget. I, it's always possible, and in 2009, a lot of people learned that. I laid off 25 people.
Please conclude, sir.
Thank you.
Sir, your name was Ray Groom.
Ray Groom.
Ray Groom, thank you. Ken Baker, followed by Michael A. Varner Jr.
Can you all hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
My name's Ken Baker. I've lived in Paradise most of my life. My stepfather, my uncle, and my brother all worked for PID at one time. I decided this was a good place to settle down with my family. I purchased property. I landscaped it. I'm a veteran. I did two tours of combat in Iraq.[1512.51][1512.51](APPLAUSE) I came back a little different than I left. My son did Iraq and Afghanistan. I only bring it up because the money that I earned landscaping my property, I take care of my family, so they're not on welfare. If my children have a problem, they come back home to daddy, and I take care of them. I have eight people living at my house. We've been doing about 300 gallons a day. I don't know if that's conservation. I know it's less than we were using last year. That 300 gallons goes between eight people, five chickens, two dogs, and whatever else I have on my property. We don't wash our cars. We bought new appliances that were more energy efficient and used less water. We replaced our toilets. And now I'm being told, I thought tonight we were coming here to talk about the rate that was proposed. I'm not quite sure if what we're saying tonight is, is that if the protests don't pass, that's the rate, or we have an alternate proposal. I used the Aqua Hawk. I threatened my children if they took too long in showers. I sat down and figured out to the nats behind what it was going to cost me for my water bill, and now with the other proposal, I'm a little lost.[1613.46][1613.46](APPLAUSE) I appreciate, I appreciate that there were, there was an alternative put out. It would have been nice if that would have been put out from the beginning. It would have been nice if there was input. It would have been nice if some of the other proposals would have even been brought to our attention. I don't begrudge anybody's salary. I work for mine. I'm sure you work for yours. I know in times of shortage, we've been asked to conserve water. Seems like that would relate to revenue as well. So the raises are hard for me to understand when you know there's going to be a revenue issue, you're going to charge me more money to use less water, and you're going to give yourself a raise in the process. It's hard for me to understand.[1657.51][1657.51](APPLAUSE) I know the job that you do. I know the hours that you have to put in. I watched my dad and my uncle do it. I know it sometimes is a thankless job. I do appreciate the effort that you put forward, and I appreciate you listening to me. Please do what's right by the people. That's what you're here for.
Thank you, sir.[1681.73][1681.73](APPLAUSE) Michael Varner, and then I will read questions from Eloise Farup. Mr. Varner. Jerry Kirkland, and then I will read the questions from Eloise Farup. One, why are you not regulated by the Public Utilities Commission of the State of California? Two, why did not all landowners get advance notification? I did not. Three, what is the PID bond on my tax bill for? Tax code 19,900. Mr. Varner? Mr. Varner, followed by Jerry Kirkland and Renee Eagleson. Sir.
I don't know why you can't do something like the rest of the government do. They all do it the same way you do, but at least they have a ballot. They put it out to the, everybody, and they get to vote. Instead of doing it your way, where you sneak it around behind somebody's back and then change it in the middle, put it on the ballot. We're going to have an election. Why can't you do it that way? I'll bet you'll get more than 51 or 5200 votes on it. That's the way it should be. You're making us all feel like mushrooms, keeping us in the dark and feeding us bullshit.[1790.26][1790.26](APPLAUSE) You're making us all feel like mushrooms, keeping us in the dark and feeding us bullshit.
Renee Eagleson, followed by John Hollister. Ma'am, did you already speak?
I just have one.
I'm sorry, I can't permit you to do that. John Hollister, followed by Betty Maxwell, and then Louise Jamel or Tamel? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is John Hollister, and I've been a resident of Paradise since the drought of nineteen seventy-seven. And I figure I'm going to have a drought in my pocketbook here pretty soon. It sounds like a lot of people might be if the proposed rate structure goes into effect. Now, I'm not a lawyer, but I figure that that tiered rate has got to be, that we were here to speak about and all of those appeals are about, is illegal. And I know you work for the best, attorney works for the best water attorneys supposedly in county or the area, but I would suggest that the board take a look at other possible attorneys and ask them about that legality of that structure. And if you're not going to do that, if you're going to go with Plan B, the only legal thing for you to do would be to, again, notice us, give us forty-five days, have a hearing within forty-five days, and we would discuss that. Now, as presented to us, that what was on Attachment A, I guess, I didn't get an Attachment A, there aren't any out there, if it is as presented, that there are no tiers, no five tiers, then that would be much more acceptable to me. And a thing where we have a base rate that goes towards some of the fixed costs and then a variable cost with a usage rate, that makes sense to me, too. What doesn't make sense to me is, we've heard a lot about expenditures of PID, and it seems like the majority of the board doesn't realize that this country has been in major, the largest recession since the Great Depression in nineteen thirties, and that every government agency like PID, and certainly everyone in private business, has had to cut back. But you guys keep spending more and more, and it appears that not all of the board, but the majority of the board, is willing to spend our money regardless of its impact on us. And I think that that's immoral and unfair. I look forward to Mr. Duncan and Mr. Hunt resigning, or certainly being voted out in the next election. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Louise Jamel or Tamel, followed by Betty Maxwell, and then Wendy Abkin Cobb.
I guess I'm next. I'm Betty Maxwell, and I'm going to speak to the tiered rate system. I listened to the video on PID, where Mr. Barber made a presentation, and to be honest, I didn't quite understand everything. And since there's no assurance that the tiered rate system is going to not pass, I'm going to address my concerns. Under the current proposal, water rates are consistent month-to-month, regardless of the amount of water used, unless one surpasses the maximum for that rate tier in a given month. Where is the incentive for users in higher rate tiers to conserve water during fall, winter, and spring months? We are under a mandate to reduce our water usage by thirty-three percent. I'm one of the higher water users. I'll admit, we have a lot of landscaping. And I am an environmentalist. I will conserve regardless. But where are, how are other people going to feel about that? You spend seventy-five dollars a month, and you only use five dollars' worth of water. Where is the incentive to conserve under this tiered system? The other thing is, is how is a static rate structure, regardless of usage in a given month, meet the stipulation that rates cannot be set for more than a cost to provide service to the individual parcel? So maybe I use seventy-five dollars' worth of water in July, but I use five dollars' worth of water in December. How are you going to tell me that you are providing water at the cost, at your cost to farm my usage, when I'm using a lot less? And it's also not clear how often one can change tiers during a given year to match what a rate payer would predict water usage might be for seasonal needs. And that was specifically what I didn't understand in the video presentation. Can a rate payer ask to change tiers multiple times in a year, and if so, how often? I also would like to know is, after the treatment plan is paid for, or the drought is no longer present, which is doubtful, given current scientific projections, is there some way for this rate increase to sunshine if it's not needed? And I'm also kind of surprised that the PID administration, the board, did not see the possibility of significant public backlash to the proposed rate increase. You need a rate increase. We all need a rate increase. We need to maintain the infrastructure. We need to pay for whatever it's going to cost to meet the state mandates. But it's my understanding that the Paradise population is more than fifty percent retired. They're living on a fixed income. There was no COLA this year. Many people are really struggling to survive. I don't see that this tiered rate system is fair to those individuals. I realize that you cannot take that into consideration under Prop. 218, but there has to be something else that can help people out. I also--
Please conclude.
Okay. I also would recommend that I, well, I like what Mr. Barber came up with tonight, but if the tiered rate system does not pass, that you put this out to the community and get a broader consensus. Not that anybody's going to come up with anything better than what you've come up with, but to get buy-in.
Thank you, ma'am. Louise Jamel or Tamel, followed by Wendy Abkin Cobb, then Karma S. Eastman, I will read your statement. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Louise Jamel, and thank you very much for giving me this time. I have three questions for you, and then one comment. We've known for four years that we've had this drought and that we've had to conserve. And my question is, why hasn't there been enough advanced planning for this emergency that we're in now? You have known what your fixed costs are, what the projections for the increased fixed costs are. Why the poor planning? Number two, I worked for the county of Butte for a little over twenty-five years. In that time, the county almost went bankrupt, and we had money problems. The employees all took five percent decreases in their income until there were better times. It's called public service. Lastly, could you please identify the disinterested parties that are going to be doing the ballot counting, and who will be the referee or observers? Now for my comment. Mr. Barber, thank you very much. I realize you have a very difficult job to do. However, I took offense today when you were up here talking to us, and you used quite a condescending attitude, especially when you told us that was as big as it could be, live with it. I did not appreciate that, sir, even though you didn't say, "Live with it." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Wendy Abkin Cobb, followed by, I can read your statement, Karma S. Eastman, then Bob J. Ambercrumbi.
I'm allowed to follow up on my statement, right?
What's your name?
Karma.
Would you like me to read it, or?
Yes, please.
Why didn't you notify everyone that goes through Paradise Irrigation District that the rates were going up?
Yeah, instead of those that just own the parcel or the landowners, because some of the renters actually--
Closer.
Closer? So there are landowners, of course, but they sometimes rent out their land, right? So shouldn't it be the people who pay the bill that get the notification? Also, for any politician, I would give this advice. If you're going to pass anything, get the public opinion first. Any politician should know that. And if you take care of the public, the public will take care of you. And if you forget that, you will be out of office as soon as you can snap your fingers. Also, what's the point of coming up here and asking questions if they won't be answered That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Wendy Abkin Cobb, she wished to address the board and also submit the following comment. More showers and baths, a new irrigated lawn, cleaner clothes and dishes, bite off your noses to spite your faces. Ms. Cobb, would you like to add to that? Mr. Ambercrumbi? Followed by Daniel Wintlin.
The young lady stole my thunder there, because I was going to say that I'm appalled that our questions aren't being answered as they're asked. I'm appalled that our questions aren't being answered as they are asked. There are several in the audience that are business people, and when we start running into financial difficulties, the first thing we have to do is look at our expenses and our overhead, and not give people raises and bonuses. We have to cut our costs before we can do other things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Wintlin, followed by Don Martin, then Robert E. Rose. Hold on. Try again.
I thought I was eating the mic. What happened? In regards to counting the ballots, I hope that you gentlemen on the board have realized now, or would realize soon, that irregardless of what the count is, we hope that you've gotten the drift from the people, that we need you to slow down, step back, communicate better, present more options, and then proceed with us, the people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Don Martin, followed by Robert E. Rose, then Loretta Griffin.
Can you hear me now? Oops, sorry. Hi, my name's Don Martin. I just have a couple of quick observations first. As somebody that kind of studied body language a little bit, five of your board members are sitting forward, paying attention, listening, and Mr. Duncan, you're sitting back there like, eh, I don't give a-- So, and then there's six of you up there, and there's only five name cards. Many of you don't have a name. And quickly, how many people would vote against this? Quick show of hands? Okay. Now, you got a raise to get up to a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, and the national average for raises for people has not gone up in ten years that much. And what makes you think you deserve that much? What is your specialty that makes you so special? You know? Are you part of the one percent? I know you're not going to answer it now, but anyway. And why do you have to remove trees for, it costs so much money? Trees are very important to, anyway. And that yard, how much would it actually cost to get somebody in there to clean it? You know, and put stuff away and throw away the bad stuff, and repaint what's there? But it's too late for that. Let's see. Okay, I'm a single guy, lives by myself, I'm on a fixed income, and you get this big raise, you're part of the one percent, but we have the same increases in our water bill. Why, how can that even look like it's fair? You know, I mean, it should be based on income. I'm sorry, but the people that have all this money and they're putting it in the bank should have to pay more than the people that spend every cent just to survive. Okay, all right, all right, all right. All right, okay, you said that the choices were between a wetlands development or a chemical plant? Okay, now, I know that the wetland development's not going to really give you much kickback, but a chemical plant, what kind of tax breaks and incentives are you going to give them to be in Paradise? You know, I mean, why can't they pay more for the systems that they're going to use, for the roads that they're going to use, for the people they're going to hire, and not pay for the next generation to be trained and not to upkeep the roads because they don't want to pay taxes? That's what happened in Kansas and Ohio--
Please conclude, sir.
That's what happened in Kansas and Ohio, and look what happened to their coffers. They're broke. Is that what you want for Paradise?
Thank you. Robert Rose, followed by Loretta Griffin, then Sue Roberts.
Good evening, I'm Bob Rose, and I'm recently a property owner in Paradise. And I know there was a gentleman that first spoke up tonight, couldn't read the paperwork and the billings and stuff, and I wonder if there isn't a way that you could put it in layman's language on the bills where people that don't use your terms would understand it, and a lot of the older people wouldn't recognize a lot of this stuff either. I don't know, you know, you wouldn't have to change all of your paperwork that you send us, but you could put it on the bottom there in layman's language, you know, what, in gallons, and what it actually is, water or something else. Just my thought on there, makes it easier to read the billing. Also, I was a little disturbed about hearing that we pay for fire hydrant maintenance. I put thirty-one years of service in the City of Chico Fire Department, and we handled our own hydrants, and that's in a bigger town, which is harder, more hydrants. We wanted to be able to handle those hydrants ourselves, and it's odd to have to pay for it now when we come up to a smaller place. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Loretta Griffin, followed by Sue Roberts, then Doreen Boxer.
I knew you'd miss me if I didn't come. Holy cow, there we go. You know, all these people aren't telling fibs. All you guys know that you've been out there with little hanky panky. You haven't been watching the money. I've been going to those meetings pretty often for the past three years, and every one of those meetings, you're saying you're broke, but you haven't saved anything. You've spent tons of money on engineering, on build plan, on your other plan, I don't even know what it is. But, I mean, I don't know how much money. I know every meeting, it seemed like another fifty thousand to the engineering firms. You haven't turned a shovel full of dirt. I know our last big drought, when we all saved water, and you punished us for it then, too, you said, oh. Now we're going to enact a service fee. And by-- And by dang, you did. And we've been paying that service fee that was supposed to stop. All this crap was never going to happen again because we had that service fee. Now here you are again, coming back to me. I need to tell you how precious the water is to you guys because, and I'm being rotten tonight, I'm sorry. There was a water leak across the street from me. That water leaked for three months, ran down the road, across Foster Road, and washed out my driveway. It wasn't a trickle, there was water running. Man, I went...and those people finally got kicked out, and the bank took over the property, so evidently the bank was paying the bills. I went to PID and I said, please, you guys, can you turn the water off? Oh, no, we can't do that. I said, but the water's running down the road, it's washing out my property, I've got to pay somebody to come and put my driveway back in. You didn't care. You said you didn't care where the water went, as long as someone paid the bill. That's a...that is an absolute truthful quote from your office. That's sad. That's sad. I had to pay to fix my own driveway. Finally, after three months, I called Scott Lauter, the Town of Paradise, and bless his heart, he came out, brought the fire department, the police department, and they got that water turned off. PID did not do it. That's sad. And I know you guys do a lot of good stuff, and I know you got Aqua Hawk, all that kind of stuff, but those new meters were supposed to have saved us all money. I think that was kind of a mess up, too. So, guys, I don't think we know what you're doing now, and I don't think you know what Can you please let's start over simple so we all understand what's going on, what it's going to cost us, how much you're going to get? Please, please, please. Thanks, guys.
Sue Roberts, followed by Doreen Boxer, then Fernando Marin.
I had a speech figured out, and then when we got here, the plan changed. So I'm not going to say that speech, but the speech I would like to say is, I'd like all of you on stage to look at all of these people. When you asked us to conserve, we did. We did our job. You should be proud of us. I'm proud of all these people. Yes, our yards are dry. Yes, some of our trees are dying. Yes, I've only washed one load of clothes a week. Yes, and my car is filthy dirty. But we did it because you asked us. And now we're asking you to give us back in kind what we did for ourselves and what you asked us to do. The last part of my original speech said, "The plan is not fair to the good citizens of Paradise. We trusted you, and now this is the thanks we get."
Ma'am? Ma'am? Ma'am, was your name Sue Roberts?
It's me, Mama.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mama.
My lady, it's all me, Mama.
Are you Doreen Boxer?
I am.
Thank you. Thank you. I want to make sure I'm getting her right here. Ms. Boxer.
My name's Doreen Boxer. I just recently moved here in April of 2014. I had a completely different thing to tell you all, but after I've been sitting here listening to the community speaking to you and the demeanor and behavior of the council, I'm shocked, disgusted. We said the Pledge of Allegiance, and yet, this entire thing is a bait and switch. This should be completely regenerated, where all these community members can come to city council meetings and weigh out this new project or proposal that has now just been dumped on our shoulders the moment in which we walked in the door. Now, I have a few things to read, and I know that I won't be answered, but I'm still going to read them and may be repeating others. First thing, Pledge of Allegiance, but no respect for the community or due process. Member? Number two, no answers. Never answering any of these citizens here who have taken the time to be here. They voted for you to be where you are today, making the money that you are today. Okay, number three, this surprise new proposal, this all needs to be redone because you guys did not let your community know this was going to happen, you did not prepare the community, you did not inform the community, and you are not communicating at this moment in front of all of us. Okay. Then, fourth, renters versus owners. All taxpayers should be informed of new laws and regulations and changes within a town or city. That is the law. A vote shouldn't be popped either. Being punished for conservation, well, I'm sure everybody's said that enough times for you to get it. Confusing legal jargon, bait and switch, that's what's going on here. I'm shocked. My last name is Boxer, it speaks for itself. This is the United States, not Russia. What are you people doing? I'm shocked. Okay, a community member incentive...where is the community member's incentives to do this? Where are the incentives? There's no sewer system, and I'm just now hearing there's a water treatment plant. Where in the heck is it? I didn't know anything about that. All I know is I'm paying for septic to be cleaned, and I'm paying for my property to be cleaned on my own dime. A lot of people live on low fixed incomes. These people need to be compensated and understood that we need incentives in order to make our money work. Right now, you're just asking for more, but giving nothing in return. Creating new town revenues, I've only been here since April 2014, and I can give you at least 10 ways to make more money for this town. I don't know why it hasn't been done up till now, I'm shocked just at that alone. Creating new incentives, revales, we're getting spending, that's pretty much been covered. Allowing votes for towns to chime in.
Police conclude.
This should not be just popped on us. The city council does not conduct themselves in this fashion. This is a do it now or else. And this is not the way the United States is run. You guys need to get it together. We need a new meeting and a new date. I've got another 35...
Fernando Marin, followed by John Rawlings.
Thank you for your respect.
Thank you. And then Frank Kant.
Hello, my name is Fernando Marin. I moved to Paradise in 1994. One of the things that really attracted us to Paradise was the level of the lake, Magalia Lake, right over the dam, how beautiful it looked when you drove. A few years later, you know, the level of the dam was down. I inquired about that, and they said, well, it's due to the state or some type of government that tells us now we've got to keep it lowered. And I said, well, it used to be gravity-fed, so how are you doing it now? Well, now we have to pump it out. I said, well, that doesn't sound right. You know, I think that the Paradise PID should have had their attorney, you know, go up against the state, ask for an exemption for Paradise and Magalia, the ridge, okay? I served in the Planning Commission of Butte County for 12 years, and from 2001 to 2012. And I got to see a lot of things that weren't quite right, and, you know, you can't continue that way. The word corruption starts to get on the minds of people. Corruption is when you trade your good values for bad values. Now, everyone starts off on the right foot, okay, folks? But I'm telling you one thing. There are many things that I wrote down, and I don't have enough time to speak about all of them. But I'd just like to say that, you know, when you're looking at the mismanagement of something here, I have served on the board of the Chamber of Commerce, and I was the president of the chamber, and never once did I get remuneration for that, okay? None of the board of directors got paid at all. And I've known many people that had served on separate boards around town, never received compensation for that. Now, what we're looking at here is, you know, the salaries of nurses in town, of police officers, of firefighters, and finally, you know, a soldier who just spoke a while ago in Afghanistan. I happen to know that they make about $34,000 a year, okay? Come on, folks, we're talking about 400, 500% more. There's just something not quite right, okay? Finally, I'd like to say that, you know, I'm not a property owner in Paradise anymore, okay? I used to be, but due to a good divorce and some bad decisions on my part, I'll take it. You know, folks, all I can say is, you know, you're looking for reserves, your reserves are getting too low. I say, the salaries maybe are getting a little too high, okay? Finally, I'd like to ask, how many of you would actually do the job for free, okay? I did, okay? For 12 years, I did that, and the last 10 years, I didn't even receive and I didn't want, I refused reimbursement for traveling...
Police conclude.
...from here to Orville. I refused just even the reimbursement because I didn't feel like a public servant.
Thank you, sir. John Rawlings, followed by Frank Kant, then Johnny Ferris.
I'm John Rawlings, I live at 342 Row Road. I've got something that's very important to me I want to bring up first, and that is, I noticed the Afghanistan veteran getting up and talking. This room is full of veterans. This room is full of veterans, people who have worn the uniform for our nation. And with this form in my hand, if you sign it, you're signing away your constitutional rights. Do not sign it. It says, "Terms and conditions, customers' choice rate plans." And I'm reading from the form itself because I am voluntary requesting a change to a customer choice plan. I hereby waive my ability to bring representative or class action or to be a member of any class action lawsuit, other proceedings against the Paradise Irrigation District." That's just part of that one paragraph. Here's another one. "I agree to waive and release any rights I may have under California statutes, the California Constitution, or the federal statutes and Constitution to challenge the validity of the Paradise Irrigation District water rates on the fees, charges collected thereof." This is asking us, it's telling us, to take away our constitutional rights. I didn't go to war in Vietnam to fight for you guys if this is the way you think. And neither did that gentleman who fought in World War II. Neither did the gentleman who's wearing a uniform today. We cannot afford to give up our rights, and it starts right here. If we don't defend it now, it's not going to be done. We're going to lose our rights because we've got knuckleheads like this who doesn't know how to think about what wearing a uniform means. And some of you guys wore the uniform, I'm sure. And while I'm standing here, I'd like to tell Bill Kellogg and Doug Fleischer and give them a hand for voting for the people. You guys have to understand something. We work for the people. I work for the people. Maybe you don't know it, but I'm town councilman. I'm not here to represent the town council, though. I'm here to represent 342 Row Road, John Rawlings. Okay? Now, I think these two gentlemen deserve that hand, and this gentleman here, Larry Duncan, I was one of those guys that waited in the rain last week. And he said, oh, that's okay, let's go ahead and get this over with now. There was 100 people out there waiting in the rain. So, who does he care about? Does he care about the people of our town? I don't think so. So, we need to think about who is paying the bills. We are, and all the people in this town are. And we need transparency, we need fair treatment. And I'm running out of time already. Let's see how fast three minutes goes by, and I didn't get halfway through my speech. That's a politician for you. But I don't believe in political correctness, nor I wouldn't be standing here. So, anyway, thank you very much, but I do believe that this whole process came in under the radar, and the people weren't prepared and weren't given the time to discuss it because the forms came in separately, and they came in without us being able to think about it. Now, there was no Plan B, or they didn't come in, I've just heard. And there was no Plan B until tonight, which is first I heard about it. So I don't really think we can discuss Plan B because it hasn't been approved yet through the 45-day approval period. Thank you all for hearing me out. I'm out of time.
Thank you, sir. Frank Kant, followed by Johnny Ferris, and then Steve Lobdel. Lobdel?
This is Frank Kant. I've been here for 40 years. First of all, I'd like to point out that the communication situation, we know that you tried to communicate on this business about this rate increase. However, it became very obvious that that wasn't successful. Now, with that in mind, at your 29th meeting of last month, you had this notice, and what did you do? You rescheduled the meeting for tonight, just a few short days away from the 29th. And there are people here who have had to go out and try to collect the signatures for the protest. Certainly, cutting the time down has not helped, and who knows where we are on the total then. Next thing is health insurance. Somewhere around 20 years ago, there was a law passed in California that said, as of that date, any board members of town councils, school boards, and everything, who are receiving benefits, health benefits, they could continue. But from that date of that law, no more. My understanding that the PID is now engaging in the health benefits. I always like to say, if I've said something important, go check it out, but that's what I'm saying at this point, okay? And the last thing, the last thing I want to just say here is this. These cards, it's been brought to my attention, that they may be a violation of the Brown Act. Requesting the address and so on, okay, we're dealing with the Brown Act. And I understand it seems to be efficient to have cards so you can call people up here, okay? But we have to be careful because we shouldn't have to be, let's say, identified to the extent that, hmm, whatever might go on, okay? So, I'm not an expert on this, I just brought to my attention about this Brown Act thing. So, let's hope that our communications is going to improve. It's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Johnny Ferris, followed by Steve Lobdel, and then Jan or Jan Postola?
Hello, I'm Johnny Ferris, and I live on Drindle Circle, and I am opposed to any kind of raise on this water situation. You had asked us to reserve saved water last year, and we did what you asked, and I feel that this would be a penalty on the people of Paradise. And I'm also a senior, I'm on Social Security, not able to work, and so we didn't get a raise this year. So that makes it tough, and I'm here to speak for all the senior citizens and for the people on low incomes, and I thank you for this opportunity to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Steve Lobdel, he had a written comment. Board does not have the data to support the rate increase. Mr. Lobdel, would you also like to speak in addition to that? Jan or Jan Postola, followed by Bob Dickinson? Folks, I will answer names. If you don't want to speak, you don't have to. And as a reminder, your protests, if you submitted them, they count whether you speak or not. So I'm going to read names. If you want to speak, please come up. If you want to speak, please come up. John Postella. Roy Stare. Terrell Stare.
Oh, my name's Bob Dickinson. You called my name.
Yes, sir.
I'll be real short about this. In the process of the two-eighteen, you're clearly in violation. I'll give you a copy right here and put it into your record. There's four key elements in there that you didn't follow policy on the proper way of doing it. The other item there is that it's quite, everybody has said how much money we've lost over ten, five years, ten million dollars disappeared over that term. There's a lot of mismanagement going on here, not taking care of the funds. You're spending money, you know you got issues, you can't tell us how much something's going to cost. You're spending the money like you won the Lotto. You know, you guys got to come back in the real world. You're trying to bend all this money, all this cost on ten thousand meters.
Folks, please, Mr. Dickinson, continue.
You need, you need to spend your focus and time on the needs of these people and not your needs to spend money. We want, well, we don't mind a cost increase when it's justified and we have some evidence for it. You've provided nothing of that in that proposition, two-eighteen. It does not show, as the law dictates, how it's to be spent, what's to be spent, how much it costs for this and how much it costs for that. It's just, gee, I lost money. Okay? Anybody want to talk, have at it. I'd like to hear from you.
Thank you, sir. Roy Stare, Terrell Stare, they have a written comment. Plan B sounds more reasonable generally. Would the Plan B service charge on my bill be forty-four dollars summer and winter if I had the six K plan instead of the thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents? Would my bill like, look like this? Quantity charge, a dollar fifty per HCF, service charge forty-four dollars, town hydrant one dollar? One, this means the HCF charge is going from seventy-five cents to a dollar fifty, an increase of a hundred percent. Two, the service charge, an increase of forty-one percent, an increase of one hundred and forty-one percent if you had the six K plan. Four, again, I think an increase is needed, but not one hundred and forty-one percent plus. Five, in low revenue years, everyone needs to share the burden. Six, yes, if you want to dance, you have to pay the fiddler. If you need water, you need to pay for it. Seven, let's work together and solve our problem. Amy Stare also had a written comment. No, my concern is with the rate hike. I am on a fixed income and cannot afford higher rates. Would there be a low income consideration for those who cannot afford higher rates? Susan Nightingale, I will read this comment as well, and then following Susan, John Gilander, followed by Jenny Ryan. Susan Nightingale's comment is, please try to implement only responsible increases. Followed by Larry Scott.
My name is Jenny Ryan. Doug Fleischer, I like your tie. Okay. Mr. Barber said early on that he was happy we were here. He did everything that he could think of to thwart you. He didn't want to let us have a meeting tonight. Mr. Ken Hunt didn't want us to have a meeting tonight. Larry Duncan didn't want to have a meeting tonight. Sep, I got to give you credit. I know you wanted the deal. You're a man of integrity. You voted with the other two gentlemen to give us this meeting tonight. Thank you for that. Back to the thwarting. Last Monday, I went to ask for more copies of the petition. I said I'd like to have a hundred. She said, "You can have one, and each additional copy will be twenty cents apiece." Mr. Barber, you threw wood on the fire, more wood on the fire. Businesses all over town said, "Come on over here, we'll make you free copies." Okay? You have incited this community. You have alienated this community with the things that you have done over this, having this meeting and the opportunity to speak. We had three years of rate increases, and then last year, we got a break. Now, you've asked for five more on the plan that we came to talk about. If that should pass, that would be eight years of increases out of nine. I am opposed to eight years of increases in my water bill. I also want to say for the people that aren't aware, no matter what kind of form they give you over there, you cannot sign away your constitutional rights. You cannot sign them away. How dare you? And finally, I've been working with many other wonderful people on these petitions, and I want to say tonight, I am so very, very proud to be part of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll read some more written statements, and then after, we'll have Beal, Bill Healy, followed by Dennis Keizer or Kaiser. The written comment from Aldine Kiefer. "I, along with seventy-five percent of the Paradise residents, are senior citizens and on a fixed income. We cannot afford your grandiose ideas. It's time you retired." Written comment from Larry Scott. "There is no reason to threaten employees with layoffs due to the board and managers' decisions. They keep the system running." Written comment from Kristin or Christine Kavanaugh. "One, paying for water not used, no rollover. Two, charging for changing plans must create problem for billing. Three, troubling that PID would come up with such a bad, unfair plan. Four, most troubling is the lack of concern shown for Paradise citizens by management and several board members. Five, is management unqualified to design a plan or just don't care or both. Six, from now on, I will view, I will view anything coming from PID with suspicion and distrust secondary to obvious lack of concern for citizens of Paradise." Bill Healy. Dennis Kaiser, Keizer.
I'm Dennis Kaiser. This proposed, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This proposed plan offers a two-tier system of a dollar thirty-five and three-seventy per unit. PID must justify the higher rate since rate must be proportional to cost of service for each parcel. Oddly, the plans themselves demonstrate a conflict. If PID can deliver water over eight units for a dollar thirty-five in the upper plans, then surely it should not cost three dollars and seventy cents for over eight units in the K, in the lower three K plan. Also, the basic service fee for the five plans should be the same, but varies from plan to plan, with thirty dollars for the lowest plan to less than eighteen dollars for the highest plan. So, why does the higher user get a huge reduction on the basic service fee? The recent appellate court decision in the case of Capistrano Taxpayers Association challenging city water stated, "Tiers must correspond to the actual cost of providing service at a given usage to each parcel. The fee or charge imposed on a parcel should not exceed the proportional cost of the service attributable to that parcel." John Kopel, president of the Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association, and Jack Cohen, an attorney, drafted Proposition 218. This is a quote from a document they wrote. "To the extent tier water rates are imposed in a manner that deviates from cost of service requirements, those rates are in violation of Proposition 218. Local governments or special districts which do not abide by the requirements of the new constitutional language do so at the risk of litigation." City of San Juan Capistrano wasted money and effort defending their tier system through a trial court and an appellate court. PID should not put themselves in this position and reject this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tom Kelly, followed by Alan Rice, then Karen Masterson. A lot, folks. Yes, sir.
My name's Tom Kelly. I've lived here in this town here for about fifty years. When I first came up here, there were, there's only about five thousand people up here. This water district had started and had been running for years. The town has changed dramatically in the last twenty, thirty years. One of the things that we're, we came here tonight to protest a particular plan, not to hear about any new water plans, was this is a protest. If you want a new plan, you have to give some, give some information to the general public. Give us a little time. I didn't understand the other plan, that's why I'm totally against it, because I didn't understand it. I'm not voting for something that I don't understand, and I'm sure not going to vote away my constitutional rights on anything. Now, if you come up with a plan where you show, where you show the general public that you need a rate increase, give us a little time and a, and a American way to vote on it, not some, some communist type of voting arrangement where if you don't even come here, you're voting against it. I mean, this is ridiculous. This is the United States. If you want to put it on the ballot, send the ballot out. But the other thing is very strange here is that when we first, this district was owned by the property owners. Each property owner in this town is, is a part owner of this district, as a way I understand it, and that's why that you've only sent the thing out to the property owners. But we got a lot of apartments in this town now, a lot of old people come in, and they don't even get, they don't even get counted under the system. Some guy might have twenty or thirty apartments on one meter, and he's the only, he's out of town owner, but the renters don't even get a chance to vote. So, this is a totally unfair system, and I'm against this, this way of a rate change. If you want to do it, do it in a proper manner. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alan Rice. Karen Masterson. Followed by Dave Noble.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I understand this is a public meeting, public hearing. I, I just am concerned that, I'm wondering if you really do want to hear from the public. I have worked in municipal agency for quite some time, and in all my years, whenever there was, whether it be a neighborhood meeting, a public hearing, public meeting, nothing was ever scheduled on a Friday evening. I think that was wrong. That's in the past. It would have been nice to have a little better notice about this meeting. I'm glad somebody made a homemade sign so I could see it when I came home from work coming up the hill. As far as the raises go, I know there are a lot of seniors in this town, but there are a lot of us working that aren't getting raises either. We've had major cutbacks where I work. My take-home pay has gone down for four years in a row and is expected to go down for the next four as I continue to pay more of my own health insurance and more of the city's retirement money that I am now paying their portion. I also would like to say, not everyone has the ability to digest what I thought was a very complicated tier scheme. I do know how to use a computer, and I feel like I wasted a lot of time one evening. Instead of cooking dinner and enjoying my evening after work, I put together spreadsheet after spreadsheet to see how each four, eight, thirteen tier would affect us, how much we would pay in overages each month if we went with a lower plan and if that came out to be less. And I've come to this meeting, and I was handed an attachment at the door, and I don't even think everybody got one. What are we talking about here tonight? The tier plan? If you want to bring up another whole idea, I don't think you should be able to adopt it at a public hearing tonight. It hasn't been properly noticed. There hasn't been time for the public to digest it. I tried to do a little math. Thank goodness I have a pen in my purse, and I think under this attachment A plan, I may end up paying more than under the tier plan that I was going to choose. So, I know somebody said it sounded good, but people need time to think about something. You don't just change what's on the agenda willy-nilly. That's, that's not taking the public's input properly. Yes, it is, and it should be re-noticed. There should be a time period. I don't know if it's forty-five days or what it should be, but it shouldn't be five or fewer minutes as you come through the door of a meeting. And if you're going to have time to answer questions later tonight, these people are probably all going to be gone. I need to go home and get to bed because I have to get up at five-thirty to go to work. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Noble, followed by Jennifer Close, and then Gerald Stevenson.
My first comment is, is that you are in violation of the Brown Act by asking people's names and addresses. Brown Act deals in clarification of local government, and as far as I'm concerned, you people have provided no clarification. I think the real issue here tonight, folks, isn't the rate that you will or will not pay. I think the rate here tonight is the collusion and corruption on the Paradise Irrigation District Board. Okay? If you, if you, seriously, folks, listen. If you do some investigation on the way this board votes, it's usually three to two. The two gentlemen on the end are the only people that have any integrity on the whole board. Okay? So, I don't run out of time. I want to read my statement quickly. I originally got involved with this board when they proposed no lake fees and reduce security at our lake by getting rid of the temporary lake patrolmen, okay? So, then, listen, 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 hear me out. Okay? You, the board, said you could, you could do this by eliminating the temporary lake patrolmen. It would save you money, and then only through protest of the public, you decided that that wasn't a good idea, Mr. Barber. Okay? So, we went from there. Your general manager proposed making the temporary position full-time only after the public raised hell with you people. Okay? Then, instead of hiring Dave in a permanent position, who was the temporary lake patrolman, you guys went in-house. Here's what you did. You spent more money for the same person that you could put at the lake who was less qualified, Mr. Barber, and in the process, you ended up hiring two more people through, they were, they were filled through requests, and then you hired on a third who's your personal friend that works at the frickin' golf course. Now, how do you, how do you explain, explain to the public, if you can, how you validate that decision? Is he qualified? As a matter of fact, Mr. Barber, you made the statement that the town of Paradise is your hometown. That's bullpucky. You don't even live in the district, do you? Do you? Liar. That's what I'm talking about. Oh, I noticed my microphone's gone down, gentlemen. Thank you very much. I can talk louder. Okay? Okay? Now, now you complain about cut, cutbacks, okay? Due to the costly additional patrolmen that has been reabsorbed and cost us more money, okay? So, this isn't mismanagement. This is negligent management. It means you know the right thing to do, yet you- It means you know the right thing to do, yet you do the opposite. Okay? I'm pissed off about this mess, not because you're raising the price of my water, but because I can't trust any of you. Okay? And Mr. Lawyer, I ask you this, aren't you putting your own self in jeopardy by supporting all this collusion and corruption? I think you better ask yourself an honest integrity question, okay? All right, let me, let me finish my statement, then I'll sit down. Okay, you have overpaid foolishly, spent, negligently managed the people's money for long enough. Now changes need to be made. This is an election year, people, okay? And this board needs integrity through new direction and new directors, especially Mr. Hunt and Mr. Duncan. I'll finish, I'll finish by saying this, I got twenty-eight seconds left. Mr. Hunt, I personally have you on video stating that you don't care about what the public wants. You're a self-serving public servant, mister. Okay? You're supposed to be a public servant, and you get very well compensated, like the forty dollars an hour on Cadillac Medical. You, Mr. Duncan, are the only mayor in the town of Paradise to ever be recalled. Now why do you think that happened? I think you need to be recalled as a board director.
Please conclude.
In my conclusion, as a very famous politician would say, who I don't always agree with, but I do agree with this statement, Mr. Trump would say, you're fired.
Thank you, sir. Jennifer Close, followed by Kathleen McGrath. Then Lauren Harvey.
I'd like to bring up online access. Hello? I'd like to bring up online access. I am not retired yet, and so I work, I work in Chico, and to get these forms, yes, they're available online, but then they can't be emailed to you online. So that means I have to leave lunch in a half an hour and make it to Paradise and back, very difficult. And, I mean, let's face it, we can pay the bill online, why can't we submit these forms online? And also, since we're not going to have time tonight to hear the answers to all these questions, I see that Georgiana is taking minutes, perhaps all of these concerns and questions could be addressed online. Also, I have another, I own another property in Orville. I have South Feather. The, the rate there, the base rate is eighteen dollars, which is significantly lower. I think, you mentioned Del Oro, I think that more than one comparison should be done to see what's happening all around us, and, you know, do some of these also include septic? I mean, that's pretty big, or sewer. Our, our septic is separate. Another concern is that I heard, and I don't know if it's true or not, but I'm asking if it is, that our infrastructure, the pipes, were pre-World War II, and they're leaking and leaching poison of unknown severity and amounts. Is, is replacing this outdated infrastructure part of this six, of the rate hike? Is this rate hike even part of the sixteen million dollar plan to fix our water? That's my biggest concern. I started doing a whole bunch of research when this came up. On your website, anything I could find about water. I mean, I've lived here twenty-one years, it's kind of embarrassing that I don't know a lot of what's going on around me, even the water coming through my faucet. And what I read, that was written recently, within the last three weeks, said that since 2010, we have been out of compliance with U.S. EPA standards, and our water does not meet safety standards. Since 2010, it went on to say that aluminum and another chemical, which it didn't say what it is, I would like to know what it is, used to disinfect our water. What is that other chemical? Aluminum is a huge concern. We know that it causes Alzheimer's, and that the body doesn't disseminate it, it stores it.
Please conclude.
Now I find I'm drinking and bathing in this water, and my children, twenty-one years, what's a hot, steamy bath full of aluminum? Should I be concerned about my health, not just the rates?
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. McGrath, followed by Lauren Harvey and Gerald Stevenson.
Thank you very much for this opportunity and time. My name is Kathleen McGrath. My family's been here since the forties. PID, you've always served my family and myself very well. Just last year, my boyfriend has been up here, and he walks about a hundred miles a month, and since then, he has saved our town tens of thousands of gallons of water. He has then taken it upon himself to go walk the lines and find the leaks, and you have always shown up appropriately, on time, and fixed everything. That being said, thank you for your service. Now, I'm going to put my hat into the ring, I'm going to run for office, and I will charge you one hundred thousand dollars less for the same job. You choose whichever person you want up here removed, and I will work for the town of Paradise. I'm going to run for office to manage the PID. I'm sure there will be a learning curve, but I'm sure. I took Constitution in the, in my high school and college, I can't do any worse job. You are in violation of our constitutional rights. Get it together, so you can serve us. As a public servant, I'm asking that you do this. Either you bone up, you cut the fat, and you do what's right by the people, for the people of this community, or you stand down. My name is Kathleen McGrath. So, that being said, I have no other job, I've run my own businesses for forty years. Woman of Distinction Magazine is doing an article on me this year, so I'm sure if anybody else wants to run for the office, please do. I'll charge a hundred thousand dollars less. Gentlemen, thank you for your service, and your service and your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Lauren Harvey, followed by Jarrett, Gerald Stevenson, then Clarence Eddy Hood.
Lauren Harvey, I got here in nineteen forty-seven, through no fault of my own. I just, I'd like to waste a little of your time talking about, why don't we cut back the workers before we ask for a raise? And if you had enough, if you had enough men working on the new warehouse up on Clark Road and didn't need them for the pipeline, why didn't we lay half of them off when this job was done? And, and I'd like to see you, before you ask us for money, farm out any non-emergency repairs to a bid, and find out what they're really worth, so we know what, what this job's really worth, rather than just take George's word for it. And I'd, I'd, I'd like to see, I'd like to see you follow through. The gang of three has absolutely blocked the wetland from the other two on the right-hand side, and I'd like to see you follow through with that wetland, because of course, it doesn't need three or four technicians new up there to plant. So I'd like to see you do that. And about the plastic meters, you guys paid five point seven million dollars for them? George, these things were warranted for ten years, how long is the payment plan? We'll never get those, we owe four and a half million dollars still on those plastic meters, and they're dying every day. Was that a good major decision? The other thing is, I'd like to, I'd like to inform the public that the board members make an average of twenty thousand dollars a year, so please run for those positions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stevenson, followed by Clarence Eddy Hood, and then Ward Habril.
Thank you very much. I'm Gerald Stevenson. I just wanted to take a quick moment and thank you, board members. You've got a fantastic member in front of you. I'm so glad that he costs, let me see, what was it? It's a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars a year. An additional thirty-eight thousand dollars in what? Health cost and total retirement. I think it's time for you to, to leave Paradise, I really do. You want to know how much a district secretary makes? Do you really? How about seventy-seven thousand dollars? I'd say, ladies and gentlemen, but I really hope you, the board members, will go back to doing your job. We're not happy with our price increases. I've got young boys to feed and give baths to, I've got trees to water that I don't want to die, because you know what happens when pine trees die? It only takes a couple of years before they start disintegrating, and then they fall. I don't want them to. Our town is beautiful. However, this is an election year. It's real simple. You need to do the right thing. I'm looking at you to do the right thing tonight. If you don't want to do the right thing, please retire. Another good thing you might want to consider real fast is to simply cut your wage. You want to save a bunch of money, you're scared about, let me see, sending out ballot petitions so we know what's going on, what you're doing? How about taking a huge price decrease? Nobody likes it. I know you have a tough job, I just want this town to have a fair shake.
Ma'am, please sit down.
The people are speaking, please take a moment to reflect on it. That's what I'm asking. We want answers, and we want a fair shake, we want to make sure that what we're voting on is appropriate for all of our families on the ridge. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you, sir. Folks, before you start, sir, I hear you, you want to have answers, that will come later. It's scheduled for the hearing. Let me finish, please. I have comment cards from people here that want to speak. They were respectful when the first people spoke. Let's get through it. If you do not want to speak, you do not have to. All that counts is your written protest. You're welcome to speak, we're going to get through all the cards. If you don't want to speak, don't stand up. Clarence Eddy Hood, followed by Ward Habril, then Joan Hickson.
Okay, I'm going to face you guys, because I've been facing those guys all night. I'd rather face the people of my town, you know? Back in the nineteen thirties, Woody Guthrie wrote a song called "The Ballad of Pretty Boy Floyd," and the first line of the third verse goes, "It's through this life you travel, you will meet some funny men, some will rob you with a six-gun, and some with a fountain I like the objectivity of numbers, so I'm going to just provide you, I did some math before I showed up tonight. In 2013, the collective salaries and benefits for forty-eight PID employees amounted to two million, nine hundred and one thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That's a, that's across forty-eight employees. That's, the median income of that is sixty thousand, pretty much sixty thousand, five hundred bucks. Now, in two years, two years later, 2015, the total salary and benefits for forty-nine PID employees amounted to three million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars. In two, in two years, so that's, and so the median income for that amount is seventy-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That's ten point two five percent rate increase per year. Nice work if you can get it. You know, from the beginning, members of, members of this board, not all, have adopted a position that is adversarial, contemptuous of we, the people. Okay? And there should be a detailed investigation of the events that led up to this rate hike. Discovery and documentation of every measure taken by the PID board to maximize the realization of their financial objectives and minimize public awareness of these strategic objectives. They were carefully calculated by the board to assure the shortest possible time for their customer base to mobilize and organize an effective campaign to block this blatant money grab. Their content, their conduct, their attitude towards us, the body politic, is nothing short of the very definition of malfeasance. Look it up. Their pursuit is to appropriate our livelihoods for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Habril, followed by Joan Hickson, and then I will read a statement from Bernadette Pla, P-L-A.
Thank you. Good evening, board. For many years, I was in management. When I moved to the executive wing where I worked, I shared this plaque. I know you believe you understand what you think I said, but I'm not sure you realize that what you heard is not what I meant. Exactly. And that's what we have here, a chance to confuse your constituents and your customers. Shame on you for that. I'm remembering and thanking The Paradise Post for Saturday's editorial. Anybody else read that? Pretty much right on. First, though, I do want to apologize, especially, I did it by email to President Corolla a few days ago, now to the rest of the board, for my abrupt departure from the previous meeting. I am not a rude person. My normally good behavior should have been, should not have been influenced because of your misbehavior. I do appreciate that you have moved and continued this meeting. Next, some thanks, though, for all the information and education you have provided over the last several months. I think praise is worthy when you deserve it. Especially Mr. Barber's history of the water company, including that it began ninety-eight years ago with a bond that passed by ninety percent of the public, the people of Paradise, to fund a capital project. Municipal bonds are an excellent resource for capital money projects and a great investment since the gains are tax-free. However, the upcoming capital project for PID, known as the Process Water Recycle Project, is not funded by municipal bonds, but through the general budget of PID, which means the people do not have an opportunity to support this project with direct purchase of bonds, or the people do not have the right to vote on this project and deny it. Lastly, there has been no discussion on an alternative water treatment option that would not include alumina or aluminum sulfate, the chemical the state wants you to get out. Water treatment systems that I am familiar with and have operated in the past have used ferrous sulfate, and therefore there is no aluminum contaminant. To not consider some alternative and much less costly options than the huge expense of the Process Water Recycle Project does not make sense to the people of this town, the same people you say that own this water company. It's time to make sense. Had you separated the capital project out of the budget and into a bond, the water rate increase would not have garnered so much attention and objection. I know that you cannot take action on non-agenda public comments, even to the extent of admitting you made a mistake. I would thank you for your time anyway. But I'm also remembering Obama, not that I like him, but what he said in the State of the Union address. "It is a sad state of affairs when the American public can't trust their government."
Please conclude.
Just change it geographically to Paradise.
Thank you, sir. I will read a couple written statements, written comments. After that, Jason Baker, followed by Barbara Donovan Elder. A written statement from Joan Hickson, "I will gladly accept a thirty percent increase in water fees if the board..." "I will gladly accept a 30% increase in water fees if the board will accept a 30% decrease in pay." Written comment from Bernadette Pla. "I am grateful that, as a town, we have our own water. I am grateful that PID provides good water and service. I have worked very hard to conserve water above and beyond. I am on a fixed income and can't afford the increase that is proposed. You must offer a low-income option with verification. If you must increase it, should be minimal. There has got to be a better solution. Social, see, no raise, yet bill's up. Help." Jason Baker?
I'll be brief. Almost everything was touched on already. We've heard tonight from people that nobody wants to make speculation as to what happened to all the notices. Sorry. We've heard from people that nobody wants to make speculation on where all the mailing notices went, and this represents a very small portion of the Paradise community. And we've already seen that probably more than 10% of the people didn't receive their notices. So without making speculation, how do we take an accurate vote of the people of Paradise if we know that such a large number of them haven't been notified?
Thank you, sir. Barbara Donovan Elder, followed by Sue Porter, then Mike Decker. Barbara? No. Sue Porter? No. Mike Deck... Sue? Mike Decker, followed by Gary Spencer.
Most of the things have been touched on already, but I would like to reiterate the fact that with the median income in Paradise, the people in PID are making entirely too much money, which I have a feeling has to do with the board, and since it's always voted three to two, we'll leave Mr. Fletcher and Mr. Kellogg out of this. The other three people need to be recalled.
Thank you, ma'am. Mike Decker, followed by Gary Spencer. Not present. Linda Reynolds, followed by Lori J. Noble, Noble Orchard Company. I have a protest here, George. Your name, ma'am?
Linda Reynolds.
Thank you.
I'm going to start off with, water is life. That's why we're so angry. This man right here in the turquoise shirt making $158,000. His retirement is more than I live on, $38,000. You got a problem with your budget? It goes from him. He should pay it. He's in charge, isn't he? General manager? Isn't that where the buck stops? I am a voter and a property owner of one acre on organic land in the town for 20 years. I pay my property taxes and I use PID water to live. Water is life. I have raised a family here in Paradise, and I am living my dream in Paradise after working 42 years of my life. This is my retirement home. Because of high prices, I lost an established maple tree 20-foot tall, and my 10-foot camellia bushes are turning brown from the lack of water. I can't cut them down. I don't have the strength. If one cannot afford to water the land, Paradise will turn brown and become a fire hazard to the town and its people. PID, stop turning our water into gold only the rich can afford. Many have no... Many cannot afford more increases. SSI did not increase and give a cost of living raise. To increase our rates is just wrong. Many of us use buckets in our showers to save a few drops of water so we can keep our flower gardens. I know a lot of senior citizens have pulled their arms out carrying those buckets just to save so they can have that flower garden. Our reward is a flawed plan. PID is trying to push through to uninformed customers. I think the money can come from the overpaid positions. One, two, three. And I have a list of the wages right here for anybody who wants to read what these people are getting. Shame on you, PID. You failed the people of Paradise. No baseline? We have baseline for our phone. We have baseline for our PGN. We have no baseline. Water is life. No matter how much they use, PID creates and has, they have nots. There are going to be the people that have the money to pay for the water and the people that do not. Again, life and water are the same.
Please conclude.
We need help getting the dead trees down to make this a safer community. You, PID, are creating problems, not serving the people who elected you.
Thank you, ma'am. Lori Noble, Noble Orchard Company, followed by... I will read a statement from John Peck, and I will read a statement from Adam Strishack, and also Robert Griffin.
There's hope, everybody. Mine was the very first card in that box this evening. Fast forward to tonight, February 8th. It's an accomplishment that so many community members are now ready to learn about water for our town of Paradise. We are at a major crossroads. Never again will PID seats be uncondested in our election processes. Never again will PID Board of Directors infight like children in the schoolyard, either in or out of meetings. Check your personal feelings at the door and get on with the job you were elected to do. Your constituents will be watching. Management, please look at the bigger picture. It takes time to disseminate information to your public. Start with the real issue, not just the required action. Get the information out front. PID, you have mandates from your public tonight. They want answers, and they have expectations that a new rate increase schedule is not going to be something that's instantaneously adopted. It does require notification. We collectively need to regroup. Your public here tonight needs information that they have not received. Thank you.
Thank you. We have eight more cards, so now's your opportunity. If you wish to speak and have not submitted a card, please do so quickly. As soon as I get through the cards, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. This is a written statement from John Peck. "I would like to know the cost of moving to smart meters and how many meter-reader jobs were lost. Why didn't you choose to share a chipper, chipper, I believe, with the town instead of buying one for $30,000? It seems to me that PID feels that money flows free in Paradise." This is a written comment from Adam Strishank. "These proposed rate increases are not fair to the retired and low-income people in Paradise. I'm a landowner and was not notified of proposed rate increases or a public hearing. Obviously, there is a lack of transparency." This is a written comment from Robert Griffin. "Count the ballots submitted. We don't need the meeting going on for hours if the ballots are enough to stop the proposed rate increase." This is a written comment from Doug Kikehon. I'm sorry. "We have a friend who owns 10 properties and was told he could only submit one protest form. Why is that?" Mark E. Roberts, Merrick Roberts. "They wish to speak, but they also have a written comment, which I will read. How can the board answer all the questions the public has asked? When will they answer them? When I will? When I only see two board members taking notes for a short period of time, and I would like to speak." Merrick Roberts, your chance. Yes, sir.
Yeah, are you going to count these so we can get this done? Look at the auditorium.
As soon as we're done.
There were people standing outside when, a little earlier on. So, anyway, it's Mark Roberts, and I...
Sorry.
I wanted to ask, so if we don't sign this agreement where we waive our rights, then who makes that decision for us? You guys? Because I don't want to sign it, but I don't want you guys to make the decision for me either. I have 2 minutes and 26 seconds, and I just give it to counting these and getting to the end of this. I'd like some answers.
Thank you, sir. Susie Prater, you're the last person that wishes to speak, and I'll read a couple of statements while you're coming up. First, from Bill Hopman. "The protest forms can be part of a database, names and addresses in alphabetical order and posted online. Every citizen could then check the database to see if their vote was counted." The next written statement is from Judy Westbrook. "Could you please notify all of the PID customers about your late fee charges on our bill and explain where these fees are used and how?" Ms. Prater?
I'll take just a few seconds. I did not get notified of the first rate increase and did not even hear about the meetings until last Friday to try to come on a wet Friday night. I did receive the attachment A, and just based on my own personal use, it is a 42% increase in my bill. Nobody, I don't know of any business that could survive and stay in business with a 42% increase like that so quickly. You need to reconsider and draw this out and make the increases over a more lengthy time to give people to adjust to it. Yes, I can understand that you do need your increases. The wages are out of control for this area, but I know cost of everything has gone up. But you need to look at everything in-house for your expenses closely before you come looking to the public."
Thank you, ma'am. I have no further comment cards. Does anybody want to jump up? Final chance. That has not spoken. That has not spoken.
May I?
Your name, ma'am?
My name is Liza Whitmore, and I would like my question, if at all, possible, to be answered first. And that question is one that has been repeated frequently this evening, which is, you explained the process in the beginning, that after the public comment was done, that you were going to count. So you are manually going to take the time to count these, which is going to determine whether or not, if there is not enough, whether the board is going to vote on implementing the tiered increase, which makes me terribly confused because your general manager got up and proposed a second plan. So that is why all these people have been sitting here, listening to the comments and so on, but wondering whether or not, you heard at the beginning, what are we testifying about? What are you doing? So you're going to vote on the plan, and then you're going to vote on his Measure B? Is that what's going to happen next? Because you're hearing from people here tonight? No, we need opportunity to be able to consider that. So the process has been absolutely astoundingly unclear, and I really am just appalled at how and why this whole thing has happened. Anyway, I think that really needs to be the first question that needs to be answered, is whether or not the Measure B is going to be voted on tonight.
Your name again, ma'am?
Liza, L-I-Z-A, not with an S, Whitmore, W-H-I-T-M-O-R-E.
Yes, sir.
I'll make this real quick. I think the whole process of us gathering protest signs, the onus has been on us in a short amount of time to get as many names as we can. We got 3,000-something. You could automatically, well, we need 5,000 or whatever, what you quoted. You're assuming anyone who does not protest or doesn't have the word is a yes vote. That's not right. You have it easy. We have it hard. We're suffering. We're trying to get people informed, finding out, and you heard the confusion of a lot of people here, not really knowing. It doesn't seem that confusing to me, but however, things need to be explained. It needs to be really clear, and the onus is on us. We have to work. You just going to automatically assume they didn't make a response, they're not on the protest sign, maybe they weren't contacted, and they're a yes vote. That's not right.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am. Your name, please.
My name is Lisa Black, with an S.
Lisa?
Black. And I'm just going to take a second. I just want to thank all the volunteers that got out in the community to pass out the forms so that everyone would rally here and know about this.
My name is Carol Franco, and I just have one question. Where are all the ballots that were mailed in and dropped off? I saw someone take things out of the box. I want to make sure that all the ballots are counted because I also heard that the ones that were mailed in were not presented tonight.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Jim Baumann. I submitted a form at the front door, but apparently it wasn't recognized. Most of the points I had have been quite well-covered tonight. I just wanted to respond to Mr. Barber's opening challenges to compare the rate increases, proposed rate increases, to my cellphone bill and my cable bill. Well, the proposed rate increases are going to be way more than my cellphone bill of $33.80 a month for my flip phone. I don't text because I can't afford it. I am on fixed income. You're looking at the face of someone low-income. I don't have cable because I can't afford it. I have antenna, and you don't want to know the disgusting things that we've done in the last year to save water. With regard to all these nasty things that are supposed to be removed from the effluent, from the process plant, a couple of comments. The EPA supposedly is going to fine you guys if you don't do anything about it. I think the EPA is more of in a reactive mode than a proactive mode. I can't believe they're going to come after us with nasty fines. I guess if they want to do so, tell them to pee up a rope. In conclusion, I guess I can't see where all this treatment is needed. I personally would rather drink out of Magali Reservoir with a straw than pay these rate increases. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Pastor Stephen Salas? Pastor Stephen Salas?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I've seen this happen in the past. I'm from Los Angeles, and I grew up in LA, and then I lived 20 years in Lake Tahoe, and we've seen the same thing there happen over and over again. And we've watched our rent go from $350 to $3,000 overnight, and we saw the hikes and everything, and nobody really paid attention. And then because they didn't pay attention, it was out with the millionaires, in with the billionaires, and I'd hate to see this town basically go through the same thing, which is what's happening. Basically, people who live in a 200 space, mobile home park, those people don't have a voice, none of them. Every one of them is getting about $450 from SSI or 850 if they're on, you know, SSDI. So those people who are only paying $450 or $425 for their space rent can barely get by right now, and then you go ahead and tax these people who own these mobile home parks. Those people are going to pass it on to them. The rent's going to go up to $600 and $700 per space, and these people are going to have to move out of town, and you're basically going to displace a lot of people who will not be able to afford their rent, will be pushed out. And this will just keep going. People will be pushed out and pushed out and pushed out till nobody's really left. And I've seen this happen. I only get like 9,000 a year myself to live on, and, you know, I was going to try and buy a house, but after seeing all the rent hikes, you guys just raised our sales up to 8%. You're just raising, 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 getting ready for this, you know, big pump, you know? We don't need, you know, any of this constructed wetlands. We don't need that. We don't need, there's a lot of things you guys want to make that we really don't need because it's constructed. It's not nat, it's not natural wetlands like we have in Lake Tahoe. And they passed up $2 billion, and all they had to do was come up with 50 million. They already had the 20 billion, but they said, no, we don't want your money, you know, gore, and get the hell out of here. And our lake went from 99.9% clarity to 95%, and now it's like one of the dirtiest lakes around. And I would really appreciate it if you'd understand, we are all on a fixed income. 82% of the people here are on a fixed income.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I have no further cards and not seeing anybody else that has not already spoken. Mr. President, I recommend you close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to be closing the public portion of the hearing, the public, excuse me, public comment portion of the hearing. At that point, you will no longer be able to submit any protest forms. If you have a protest form and you want it in that box, you have now to get it in there, please. Thank you, sir. Anybody else have a protest form? Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public comment section of this hearing. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to legal counsel. He's going to talk about the disinterested parties that will count the protests and that we're not withdrawing.
Okay, so the next order of the proceeding here tonight is to conduct the vote, and, let's see if I can control this. Okay, as a reminder, the majority protest figure is 5,269. The vote will be counted by disinterested parties. It will be conducted in front here, so all you folks can stay and observe. And again, as a reminder, if the protests exceed the 5,000 figure, we will likely ask for a continuance of the hearing to validate the votes, in particular, to ensure that it's one vote per parcel. If the votes are less than the 5,000 figure, then the board will proceed to having the questions that you asked answered by staff or myself, and then considering a resolution to change the rates. So the three disinterested vote counters are Emily Lamo. She's a partner in the Manassian Law Firm. She's not interested in this proceeding. She does not, she is not a customer of the district. Also assisting is Christie Park and Georgiana Barayo, employees of the district that also are not PID customers. The board will take a recess while the vote is conducted in your view.
Shirley doesn't like soup. I love it.
I do. I have it all the time when I get it. It's good soup.
Okay, folks, give me a minute. We'll go ahead and we'll answer your questions up here, okay? Okay, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to whether or not the board wants to spend money on validating. We obviously have enough votes to kill our Prop 218, and so I've got a couple of different directions I'm going to go, but I am going to, at this time, if anybody's interested in making a motion to validate, I will entertain that.
I move we accept the number that has been presented without any further validation.
I'll second that. Okay. Okay. All in favor of that? I'm not going to go into a long, lengthy discussion. We don't need that. All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Okay, passes 5-0. Okay, right now, I am going to, right now, I'm going to make a motion to set the regular board meeting here at the Paradise Performing Arts next Wednesday, and an agenda item be added to start a new water rate structure workshop and study, that is so the public will be able to join us. Second? Director Flescher, seconds? I made the motion. If you want to second it. That'd be next Wednesday, our regular board meeting. We are going to hold it here at the Paradise Performing Arts Center. We've already verified a week, a week. Just give me, someone give me a date. It's a little late at night.
February 17th, 6:30.
February 17th at 6:30 here at the Paradise Performing Arts Center. We've already confirmed that we can have the facility if we'd like it, again. There's no larger venue than the Paradise Performing Arts Center here in Paradise. I, I think that holds more here.
Mr. President?
I think, I think we have enough room here at that. I think we have enough room here at the Paradise Performing Arts. It's been offered to us again, and I think the same rules that we did here, paying the sound man will be all that we have to take care of. So it's been motioned and seconded. Did you second? Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Let me just clarify. This first meeting was offered to us at the reduced cost.
At the reduced cost.
The next meeting will be at their regular rate.
Okay, as you folks just heard, they're, they offered this facility to us at no charge if we just took care of the sound man expenses. The next meeting that we would be having here, our regular board meeting, and that is so that you can participate in the water rate structure workshop, that we will have to pay for the facility. I don't know what those costs are right at this moment, but whatever it is.
If I recall correctly, it was $250 deposit, $75 an hour.
Okay, that sounded like what I had in my head. Okay. So, any discussion on it? For what I motioned? It's a regular board meeting. There will be an agenda item, like I just said I'm going to add, and at that point, public participation will happen. I'm, I'm sorry, ma'am. We're going to work on devising a new water rate structure. We have no plan we're bringing to you. The two plans, the one that we had, the Plan B that you saw tonight, it's all gone. It's a, it's, we're going to start it, we're going to start it all over again, and then with your input, we've listened to what you said, and with your input, then we are going to devise a new water rate structure. Okay. Let's, let me get through the vote here, and then I think we can answer a few of these, these questions. Is there any director comments right now about, yes, moving the meeting to here next Wednesday?
I think it'd be very well to move the meeting here, even though it's going to cost us a couple of dollars, it would be good for the Performing Arts Center, and if we've got a pouring down rainstorm, we've got lots of parking, you know, comfortable set of chairs.
Good speakers. Director Kellogg?
Probably with nuts in my mouth just now.
Okay. Well, what, Director Hunt?
I call the question.
Okay. Director Duncan?
I think it's a good move.
Okay.
No, I can speak.
Are we there? Okay.
I want to thank the community for all your hard work and for turning down these rates and just doing something outstanding. I never thought we'd get it, and then the last time we had a meeting, I said you guys had an opportunity, and man, did you make pay with it. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call for a roll call vote on the motion.
Director Kellogg?
Here. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Still here at this time.
Director Flescher?
Yes.
Director Duncan?
Yes.
Director Hunt?
Yes.
President Corolla?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Okay, now I am going to ask that we include in next week's regular meeting an agenda item to consider suspending AECOM's contract agreement. I'd like that added into the agenda items. We have a fourth item on our agenda tonight, which was temporary employment agency contract. I'm going to table this item indefinitely at this point. I know a lot of you wanted to know answers to your questions. It was too hard to answer, here everybody speak, and give a chance for everybody to speak and answer every question as they came up. So what I'm going to do is direct staff to prepare answers to the most commonly asked questions. I know I have 68 questions that I had from people. Director Flescher, I looked over kind of at one point. Director Flescher had 77. I don't know how many Director Kellogg has, or Director Duncan and Hunt, but we are going to put all these questions together. We are going to have staff combine them and have them prepare answers for the most commonly asked questions. There's a lot of misnomers out there about, I heard a lot about giving up your rights. I don't know if legal wants to speak to that right now. Maybe that will kind of give some clarification on a Prop 218, what you were looking at there, but if you'd rather wait till a later date or not at all, that's fine.
Well, it's up, it's up to the board. You know, my pleasure is to put it in writing, and then to the extent we don't answer the questions that the members of the audience asked or don't cover them all, then there will be further opportunities to, to participate again.
Okay, then we'll just, we'll just have that question answered and what we're going to have staff prepare the answers to. So, I heard some questions out there. Not normally going to go to the public, something like this, but the agenda items and our normal agenda will be posted on the Friday prior to the meeting, which would be?
This Friday.
This Friday, thank you. My dates are off. This Friday, it will be posted, just like it is for every board meeting, is posted the Friday before. We are going to have the meeting here. You'll be able to look online at the agenda. You can go on to the PID website. I know I've heard a lot that the PID website is missing a lot of items on it. It's, it's all right there. If you can't find it, please call into the office, and they will clarify or give you the answer that you're looking for or tell you where to find it on the website. What were some of the other questions that we had? Agenda items? When is the meeting going to be? We just told you that. It will be posted like normal. I'm going to put on an agenda item to terminate the contract with AECOM. AECOM is the engineering firm that is working on our processed water recycle project up at the treatment plant. Without funding, that project stops. At that point, the state is most likely going to come in and start issuing fines. So we're going to have to do some scrambling to see if we can maybe get them to back off from that. Don't know what's going to happen in that respect, but I will tell you, they have already made it quite clear to us, if we suspend that contract with them, then at that point, they have no alternative than to start issuing fines. We already have fines sitting, waiting to go. They've just decided not to enforce them because they are, seeing that we were doing a project, they didn't want to take money out of our pockets just to pay for that. So I'm going to field like one, two more questions, and then we're going to wrap this thing up and go into director's comments. Sir? We'll consider getting some video in here for that. Sir? Censoring? Well, these, these were questions that we wrote down to ask staff about questions that you asked, so, so. No, no, just, I said, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to pull from all the lists. I don't know that all the questions will have relevancy now that we're not doing the two proposed plans, so we have to weed out some of the questions because they were directed at tonight's issue of the proposed rate structure that we had. These are questions that we wrote down, so we'll make sure they get on the list. So some of them might be, some, some of them might be the same, so I'm sure we kind of wrote down some of the same questions. Hopefully, we'll have the answers by then, yes. We have a lot of work ahead of us prior to that, so I'm hoping that we can get all that in. I've got to take time to get my questions in. Director Flescher's got to do that also. We both work regular jobs at the same time, so, yes, we're going to try to have that done for you by next Wednesday. At this time, I'm going to move to director's comments. I'm going to start with Director Kellogg.
I think I've said only can, I think I've said everything I could say tonight, and thanks to staff for getting the job done so promptly on the ballots and everything. Appreciate the work.
Director Flescher?
Yes, thank you, President Corolla. I would like a couple of points to make here. One, I'd like to... One, I'd like to compliment and congratulate Dustin Cooper for the way that he handled that answer question series. I guess you realize that there were 77, is what I have counted here and made notes on, and everybody got a chance to say their piece, and you handled it quite well. That was quite a task, so I think he deserves a round of applause. And if we had 140, we'd still be here going through them, I think. Congratulations, Dustin. And then the other thing, as Kellogg mentioned earlier, even the people that are not here, this room was full. There was hardly an empty chair that you could see, and really appreciate those people turning out in that force. Remember when we postponed the meeting from the rainy day up there on the 29th? I said, you people will come back, won't you? And they came back in force, and we really appreciate that, and appreciate the people that met a lot of our citizens in the different spots, getting these ballots signed. You see government in action right there, and so they stand to be congratulated. Looking forward to next week, and we'll have a go at it again. And thank you for coming, you will come back, won't you? Got a comfortable chair to sit in, and every seat in the place is the best seat in the house.
Thank you, Director Flescher. Director Duncan?
I have no comments.
Director Hunt?
No comments.
Okay, so good of mine. Just like to thank you all. This really showed me something about our town. I saw a lot of people out. I was at the mall on both Saturday and Sunday, my Kmart, and I saw people approaching me from everywhere I'd go. People were approaching me from seven different directions, so my hat's off to you, public. You really came through, showed us that you wanted a different rate structure than what we had come up with. I appreciate that. So we will start over. Hopefully, we can arrive at something that works for everybody, and that still gets our projects taken care of. Have a great evening. Thank you again for coming out.